Aloha Pumehanakako. The August 27th Neighborhood Board Number 34 meeting is called to order. Welcome to our Makakilo Kapole Honokai Hale Community Forum. My name is Anthony McCona Paris and I serve as your board chair. We are holding a hybrid meeting here at Kapole Hale Conference Rooms A and B and online via WebEx. For order and decorum, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand in person or your virtual hand online. And the presiding officer will recognize you before speaking. Please introduce yourself, your name. Please let us know if you live in the district. And address all of your comments to the chair. If I missed any hands in person or online, please get the attention of my neighborhood board assistant Jeffrey Jones. And he will make sure that I call on you at the appropriate time. Speakers have three minutes to comment on any item. Those give me reports this evening may take up to 10 minutes. Presentation materials have been circulated and are available online at the Neighborhood Board's Google Drive. Starting this month, we have this new fandangled instrument over here for a timer. So we all can be on the same page with how many seconds you have left to talk. And it's not just come in upon myself to make sure that you're proceeding in a timely manner. Okay, so please remember to silence all electronic devices. And keep yourself on mute when you're using the WebEx unless you're actually speaking. Again, please remember to state your name for the record before you ask a comment. Oh, sorry, say a comment, ask a question or share your testimony. This is our community forum and everyone is asked to engage with the spirit of aloha. Be free to vigorously debate all of the agenda items. Remember to treat each other with respect, especially when you're passionately advocating. Let's honor each other, keeping to the agenda and the times allotted. So we can all finish in a timely manner. Are there any questions on procedure or protocols? Seeing none, we will move forward asking the neighborhood board assistant for the roll call.
All right, please use your microphone when I call on your name, please. For those online, when I call your name, just unmute the mic. Board member England. Dudley. Ferrera.
Present.
Kelly. Taheli. Here. Litstone. Maderos. Taala. Um, not seeing online and Chair Paris. Cherry O'Quinn with eight members present, two of which are online.
Mahalo. So let's get rolling this evening, calling up Honolulu's finest fire department for the report. This one right here.
Hello, my name is Captain Douglas Yee, one of the fire department. Kapole Fire Station Engine 40, third watch. Statistics provided below represent confirmed number of incidents in the Neighborhood Board area for the previous month. For more details on incidents and related mapping information. And visit fire response search tool on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov under News and Info tab. Should you have any questions, you can email hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. If for information previously requested in regards to new fire stations. HFD's Planning and Development Division does an internal assessment. And works with other city agencies such as Department of Planning and Permitting. And Department of Housing and Land Management to determine the need and location of new fire station. Prior to the construction of a large residential community. Developers required to provide a land parcel for the emergency service facility. Incident statistics for July 2025. Fires, we had four structure fires, 10 wildland and brush fires. Four nuisance fires, which include rubbish fires outside of a structure or a vehicle fire. Zero cooking fires and 20 activated alarms with no fires. Emergencies, medical, we had 182. Motor vehicle collisions, motor vehicle collisions with pedestrians, we had zero. Motor vehicle crash collisions, we had 12. Mountain rescues, zero, ocean rescues, one, and hazardous materials incidents, zero. This month, fire safety tips and announcements. Fire safety tip, emergency notifications and resources. Understanding how you'll be alerted during urgent emergencies. And knowing where to find accurate official information is a key part of being prepared. Learn more at honolulu.gov/DEM/stay-informed. Alert methods include opt-in alerts. These notify individuals who have signed up to receive alerts via text, email, or app push notifications. Based on user preferences. Alerts are not sent based on location. Systems include HNL Alert and official government social media. Sign up at hnlalert.gov to receive notifications. Alerts may be shared by official city, state, and trusted partner accounts. Public alert and warning systems, these systems deliver urgent lifesaving lifesaving information. During immediate threats to public safety. In Hawaii, this includes, one, the Emergency Alert System, EAS. The Wireless Emergency Alerts, WEA. And outdoor warning sirens depending on the emergency. One or more of these systems may be, excuse me, depending on the emergency, one or more of these systems may be activated. Questions?
Mahalo, thank you for the report, Captain. Any questions from the board chair recognizes first vice chair Michaela Litstone.
Mahalo for that report, Captain. There was a wildfire in Kalailo a few weeks ago. HFD was super swift in, um, in attending to that fire. And not only that, HFD stayed into the night to monitor the flare ups. It was one of the scariest things I witnessed because my learning center is just a block away and it filled with smoke. And it was very scary for me and my staff and my students. HFD put us at ease and I just want to thank you for that, mahalo.
Mahalo, any other comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions for HFD from the community at large? Seeing none, mahalo for your time, appreciate it. Okay, let's call on up Honolulu Police Department online.
Aloha, board. And Kapole Community. HPD, committee, community policing team with me tonight is Lieutenant Marino Carrera. I did send the stats to board chair. Hopefully you got it and you're able to review the numbers if you have any questions on that, but um. So I have the numbers for the month of July to present to the board. Motor vehicle thefts for the month of July was 23 for our district, nine for Kapole. Burglaries, 14. Four in our area. Thefts, 110 in our district. In our area, there was 40. Unauthorized entry into motor vehicle, there was 17 total. Our area had six. Total citations issued, 906. Protocols for service in our district was 9,111. Uh, in our area, there was 2,800. Uh, let's see, no announcements, but just to go back to last month's questions. We were asked to get the speed trailer out to, I believe, Makakilo. Our speed trailer was down because the legs were rusted out and. It was back ordered and it just came in, so we should be getting that out shortly. And there is a several areas we want to place it. We will get to Makakilo as soon as possible. We're planning an e-bike enforcement in Kapole area. I don't want to get too much into specifics, but that is coming up. And I'll give you a report once that's completed. And then Lit, observe. Makai on Kapole Parkway. If you've noticed, it was cleared out and we removed some homeless encampments. And we'll stay on top of that. There are some other areas that we are gonna hit, so. You should be seeing that in the near future. Uh, any questions, comments, or concerns, I can take that now.
Aloha, anything from the board? They recognizes the member Sheila Maderos.
Aloha, thank you so much for your update. I have two questions, well, actually I have two questions that have multiple questions, but. You don't have to answer it right away because it's probably going to take some time to look at and respond. So I just wanted to address some of the questions regarding the tsunami response. Uh, my first question is what lessons or gaps in response messaging and evacuation of danger zones were identified by the Honolulu Fire Department? And the Honolulu Police Department following the recent tsunami warning? And how will these findings inform updates or additions to your emergency preparedness drills? My second question, given the traffic congestion during the evacuation and return down Makakilo Drive? After the all clear was issued during the tsunami warning? Do the Neighborhood Board First Responders and Hawaii Emergency Management Agency? Support the immediate development of the Makakilo Drive completion? Is a safety emergency road identified by the city and county of Honolulu sufficient? As an evacuation route until the Makakilo Drive completion is finalized? Please provide a detailed explanation for your response to the sufficiency of the safety road. Now, I don't expect an answer right now, but if, I'll send this, these questions to you so you and your staff and the fire department can. Can discuss and then report back to the board, please. Thank you.
Okay, uh, yeah, thanks for that, um, those questions, but yeah, those, those will need to be researched and answered at a later time and. They may involve more than just HFD and HPD to answer those questions, yeah, so. Yeah, we'll work on it and get back to you next month. Thank you.
Mahalo Nui Loa, any other questions, comments, or concerns from board members? Any questions, comments, or concerns from the community at large? Come on up.
Aloha Sergeant. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so last month, uh, at this neighborhood board, I mentioned that there is an individual that was. Routinely found in the middle of the field between Kapole Walmart and the Akaka Veteran Center. Littering and he litters profusely. So their advice from Corporal Pagan was to call 911 when we see him. Report him and they'll send somebody out. So I called the first time and it didn't seem to make much effect. I don't know if he left before the police officer got there. Second time, uh, let's see, I went to the station and I reported him saying he's out there right now. And they said that they would look into it. Then I noticed that board member Maderos, um, and I believe board member England went out there last Tuesday and cleaned up the field. And did a great job, perfect. The next morning by 9:50, he was out there and litter was back. So then I went out Friday and cleaned up the field by myself and I, every last scrap of paper. When I was there, there was a special duty officer overseeing the construction going on along Fort Barrett Road. And I mentioned what just happened, so he said he'd keep an eye on it. Yesterday, I called because he was out there again and I parked over by the Akaka Veteran Center and said, he's right there, right now. They said, well, send somebody right out. I waited and he said, oh, can you stay and, uh, you know, explain what you saw? And I stayed for about a half an hour, no police, I had to leave. And then I called 911 to say, I'm leaving, no, but they're in the area, I said, yeah, but I've got to go now, I waited half an hour. So this is an ongoing problem and of course, the litter is back and it's worse than ever. I spoke to the guy the day I did the cleanup by myself and I said, hey, I would appreciate it if you would help me pick up your trash. I'm gonna do it whether or not you help me, but I'm gonna ask your participation because this is your litter and the community is fed up. Oh, but the CIA is gonna, you know, get mad and he's mentally ill. And what I discovered when I cleaned it up was that most of the paper, he takes a piece of paper, rips it into fours. And he uses it to wipe his okoli after he uses the bathroom and he's defecating all over the field. So the paper that's blowing toward the skateboard park is covered in feces. So now I'm asking for the board's, you know, advice, what can we do to help mitigate this problem? Because the guy just is always there, everybody sees him and just turns a blind eye. So I'm just reporting on my experience and I would like HPD to maybe investigate further. There are signs that say no trespassing, it's HHFDC property, state property. That I believe is, uh, leased to Michaels. And there is no action being taken. I reported it Honolulu 311, they said that they would monitor and fix it and no action as of yet. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank you for that. So I was trying to look up the property, um. Online to see who it belongs to, I think you said it was the state. So if it is private property, then we do need somebody from that property to, uh. You know, represent, uh, the owners or, or the state to be a complainant. In order to take enforcement action on a person, you know, so. Uh, but we'll, we'll look into it and try and get that addressed as soon as possible.
I went into the Akaka Center as well and spoke to the staff there and they said that people like myself have been going into their facility complaining about it as well. Um, I asked them, can you please monitor it, you're right next door, you see the guy every day, call it in and see if we can, you know, the squeaky wheel kind of thing, right? But it just enough is enough, I mean, the guy is literally covering the field with. But thank you for your, uh, your assistance in this.
Do you, do you have the dates and times that you called?
Um, I have a few, you know, I didn't really think that I would have to record every time I called, but I've called several times. And I documented the times I went out in the field. Um, I videotaped what was going on, the whole nine, so, and I submitted that to Honolulu 311. So they have that information as well, you folks.
That's across Walmart, yeah?
Correct, it's an open field between Walmart, Kapole, and the Akaka Veteran Center.
So, um, if, if he's actively littering, um, and so littering, usually the officer gotta make the observation, you know, to, to cite him for the littering. Or they need a complainant for like a crime, right, which where you would have to fill out a statement. But, um, to address like the, um, response times and stuff that you were dealing with. If you let us, if it was in the evening or daytime and we can kind of nail down maybe like a window. We can kind of see who, who was sent and then what the hangup was and then. We can have the patrol supervisors talk to the officers about, about that particular call. And so I was asking if you have like kind of the specific times, we can maybe get that from you on the, on the side if you want to email it or.
Okay, yeah, it was about midday yesterday.
Oh, okay, okay, we can, we can, we can look it up. Yeah, we, we can look it up and then we can talk to the watch about who might have went out to it, what was going on. I mean, I cannot speak for the watch working at the time, they could have had some kind of hot call that all the guys were at and they're coming from some other call. I mean, I like to give them the benefit of the doubt, but then at the same time, we got to make sure they're doing their job, yeah? So, um, we'll, we'll go follow up with them and then, um, but just FYI, like the 301 app, it's being revised. It's actually supposed to be, there's supposed to be a new version that's rolling out. It was actually supposed to roll out the other month and it's getting delayed. But if I understand it correctly, the 301 app and the, the new app that's coming out moving forward. Anything that requires like a police response right away. It's not gonna, it's, it's supposed to default, tell the person to call 911 and not, because the app isn't monitored 24 hours. So if somebody's committing like a crime, it's not gonna go to like somebody to send it out. It'll get checked like a day later by an administrative personnel. And so they're not, it's not going to be sent right away, they like, like a dispatcher would send somebody.
Understood.
So for the, yeah, so for the 301 app, don't, don't use that for that kind of stuff. Um, it's good for other things, reporting other problems, but nothing where we need like immediate response.
All right, so, um, looking at the Honolulu Property Tax Map, um, I'm showing it says, uh, village of Kapole is the owner of that, uh, that lot. So I'll reach out to them and try and work with them and see if we can, um. Work together to get this issue solved.
All right, well, I appreciate that folks, thank you. Oh, my name is Patrick Watson.
Thank you.
Mahalo, um, community member for raising that and I confirm with HPD that that is Village of Kapole. It's the last parcel in their master plan build out. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Steve Loring, I live in the villages of Kapole. That parcel is owned by HHFDC, not the villages of Kapole. State of Hawaii.
Yep. HHFDC is the title owner.
Housing Finance and Development Corp.
And Villages of Kapole is going to be the one that is transferred over to. So you have to contact both of them in order to coordinate. This is similar to how we just had to pass legislation in order to have HPD work on the roads. Because the roads were not dedicated to the city in Honolulu. The law was just passed.
Got it.
Yep, so please coordinate with both. Now let's go to board member Mick Ferrera.
Aloha, thank you. In regards to the radar trailer, they're kind of outdated and. Back when I used to write grants for the department I worked for, actually the radar trailers kind of fell under the same. Heading as some of our DUI enforcement grant money, I don't know if that's changed. But there is grant money out there to be able to replace the radar trailers. With the ones that have the computer onboard that does traffic counts, speed for each vehicle and that type of thing. And I was wondering if there, I know you guys are short a lot of people and probably even grant writers. But I was wondering if there may be a way to write a grant for maybe two of the trailers. Uh, for Oahu wide, or if you need somebody that is off the department who would volunteer to. Write a grant for radar trailers. And also the other thing too, that, um. The other board member, uh, mentioned, those are some issues that should be taken up with the mayor's representative, not the police department. One of them being the Makakilo Drive extension. But we appreciate the enforcement that we found on Makakilo Drive from live officers. That, that is a good, it sends a good message out. Although somewhat temporary, you guys are doing what you can and I understand that. And I understand working for a department who's short personnel, believe me. So the main thing that I think is that we can get the radar trailers replaced under a grant. The other thing too is there used to be a radar, shows what speed you're going, it used to be in front of the fire department. And that was wiped out by a vehicle. And I was wondering if that might be replaced at some point. That's something that had been there for a lot of years and I think it kind of helped with slowing people down coming down that hill. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I can answer some of those, so like, um, for the trailers. We do have a, a speed trailer budgeted for the next fiscal year, but I don't know if you guys are aware. The department had some funding cut from our budget, uh, this, this current fiscal year, uh, as a result. And so we, we had a lot of equipment, like, you know, um, high priority equipment, like weapons and stuff like that, that. Uh, we had to be creative about and funding was an issue, but we had quite a sizable chunk of our budget cut. I did talk to Traffic Division about some funding they were getting for certain types of equipment, but it was very specific. For certain types of equipment and a, a speed trailer was not one of the equipment that would qualify for that grant. So I think we, we do have that one that we are gonna, you know, put out, um, in the future. We're looking to buy one probably next fiscal year. Um, in terms of getting back to the other points that was brought up. Uh, for, for the police department, we always support, uh, more routes, yeah? Like if there's another route for Makakilo, of course we'll support it because that helps with emergency access and emergencies. But that's kind of really not up to us, that's, um, that has to do with the city and there's a lot of funding with that and. You know, that's more of like the mayor's office. In terms of the tsunami evacuation, I know as a district, we reevaluated, um. For overall as a district, uh, everything went well, but. The, the thing with the tsunami is that. Everybody got off of work at the same time. And it caused this massive traffic jam and it, it, you know, if you think about a tsunami, you just have to leave the yellow zone. So if you're not in the yellow zone, you know, you're good, you, you shouldn't be on the road. But because everybody was still at work, it was like, it just congested all of the streets. And a lot of the traffic wasn't necessarily evacuation, a lot of it was like, they're trying to get home. So they can get to their animals, their loved ones, their house, or what, what have you, right? So, but as a district, we did, um, reevaluate our district emergency plans. Uh, we did look at that and, um, but some of that is kind of above our head. So what she was asking about is something that would be more applicable for maybe like DEM. Um, DEM has, is kind of more of the overall response agency for, um, you know, the tsunami, like how that alerts went out. And if there's anything they can improve, I think they have already looked at that, but I cannot speak for DEM. But that's something that maybe they have to, uh, they have to address on a, on a separate note.
Okay, thank you very much for the responses and the question from board member Ferrera. We go online next to Mike Reese.
Good evening, Mike Reese from Kapole. I notice every morning when I go to work, I work in Campbell industrial area. I always stop by 7-Eleven right next to the police station. And if there is no security guard that 7-Eleven has to hire. Man, there's a lot of homeless littering, waving, acting crazy, yelling, you know? So I mean, ask the security guard. How, how do you deal with this or do you call the police or what? And the security guy is telling me, well, we just customize and tell them leave. Or he's going bash them, but like, wow, you don't want to do that because it's not, um. It's not right. But, you know. My other question is. Does the police, the first responders, police department, meaning police department. Honolulu Fire Department and, uh, paramedics, are they fully covered? If something happened in the line of duty, if they get, um, killed? Because. My condolences goes to the police officer in Maui, my heart just break. I was like, oh. And honestly, I pray for all the first responders, especially our military. And I know if, if he was, if she was in the military, her service will be fully covered under the, um, the government. I know that's two different city and county, but I'm saying to myself, I wonder if the city and county. Would give you guys full benefit of meaning. Like if anybody would lose their life, would the city and county pay for the funeral instead of asking the public for donations and helping her and her family to pay for her um, her service and poor to rest, but like I said, my condolences and God bless her soul. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, that was a tragic uh, incident and we did have a fellow sister lose her life in uh, Maui from a uh, on duty incident. And so, yeah, because she was on duty, um, I don't know exactly what is covered, but she is uh, the department does cover uh, most of the things. Uh, and we also have uh, insurance to our unions that um, cover us in case uh, you know, we get injured or lose our life and things like that. But yeah, we are covered. And then the first one, uh, let's see, what was, what was the first one? Uh, what was your question?
Well, I work as a security guard and
Oh yeah, seven eleven, yeah.
Seven eleven right next to the Kapole Police Station. There's a lot of homeless and if they don't have a security guard, the seven eleven have to pay for. There's a lot of homeless that acts crazy and annoying. This past Sunday morning, maybe about five, five o'clock? Five thirty? Yeah, five o'clock. Um, had like three officers look like writing reports. So I don't know what happened, but I was like, oh, and there was no security guard. And this morning you had to rush right to choose one officer and zoom his car in through seven eleven parking lot and to get to Zippy's parking lot. So something happened at Zippy's. I was like, man, good thing nobody was crossing or um, um, walking or had any car because he only had his light on, not blinking or no sirens. So I was like, wow, what's going on?
So everybody, you know, if a officer observes a crime, then we can address it without um, like uh, so seven eleven is private property, so um, you know, if we observe a crime, then we can address it on our own, but um, you know, everybody has, also has civil rights, yeah? So just because they're yelling or, you know, things like that, we're not just gonna automatically arrest them, yeah? Somebody would have to be a complainant to say that uh, like they were assaulted or, you know, a crime occurred. So if seven eleven calls and they tell us, oh, this guy, you know, um, stole something or he's yelling, we can ask him to leave, um, but uh, we, we have to uh, observe either a crime or have a complainant to say uh, crime occurred and that they're willing to prosecute. Yeah, we cannot just uh, arrest people uh, without observing a crime. So I hope that um, kind of addresses your question.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your service. I appreciate it.
Appreciate your support. Thank you.
Hello, now going to board member Mulcahale.
Sergeant Maroka Mahalo for all you guys dedicated work. Instead of focusing on just one security officer, we should focus on the vendor. And the vendor should put a second security officer doing high traffic areas of homeless or houseless people. Say from oh three hundred to oh six hundred, you manage with two people. The post. And once, once it subsides, then you can release that second uh, security officer to go to another site and he or she can start at oh six thirty. In other words, he's, he's kind of doing two different sites, but he's fortifying the site that we have in problems with these people. Just a thought. Go to the vendor, whoever the security company is. Thank you.
That'll be great. Thank you for that.
Awesome. We come back to Kapole Hala and welcome, community member.
Good evening. My name is Fabrikberg. I've lived in Maka Kila for many, many years. I've been a hurricane production advocate since two thousand and six. The cell phones are not going to work if we have a bad hurricane and almost everyone is now completely dependent on cell phones. In Maui, as I understand it, there was a communication problem between the police, the fire department and EMTs. What is your agency doing in terms of coordinating with those other response agencies? So I, I understand you're not buying satellite phones. So how are you going to communicate with the public? How are you going to communicate with each other? Thank you.
Yeah, I, I can answer that. So we, the, the um, department, we do have satellite phones in the department. We test them every month. We have them for each station um, solely based on the fact that in case communication towers go down or cell towers go down. Um, there are backup systems. There are redundancies in systems and stuff, um, backup generators and stuff like that for a lot of these types of sites. But um, in terms of coordinating with the different first responders, we do training with them. Um, we have uh, different various trainings that incorporates like EMS, HPD, um, military, DOD, uh, we do other types of training. We recently just did the uh, Campbell Industrial uh, evacuation exercise and that was in conjunction with HFV and HPD. Um, we've done the Koli Koli Pass exercise. Um, and if you think about it, every time there's an incident like a fire, uh, HPD, HFV, EMS, uh, the most recent one was the Miley Fire. We set up a command post in which the three agencies, um, uh, we all have uh, communications with each other and we set up a command post where we are able to communicate to establish uh, what's going on on the ground and uh, what types of actions need to be taking place. Uh, in addition, DEM and Haime uh, also usually activate their EOCs and they have communications through the agencies and representatives in those docks um, to help get the message across the first responders. So it's, I, I, I can't comment on what happened in Maui. It was a, it was an episode where I don't think they were expecting it and it escalated very quickly and I, I don't, I, I cannot say like what went wrong. I wasn't working um, or what could have been improved on. Uh, I did hear what you did say, you know, but communication was a, was an issue, but at least for us, uh, we do practice it a lot. And every time we have an incident, we do a debriefing where we discuss what could have been improved, uh, how we could make things better. We're constantly working on our communication plans. And we try and train with inter uh, governmental agencies as much as we can.
Okay, mahalo. Um, last question goes to board member Mick Ferrer.
Hi there. Um, as a matter of fact, I work uh, for the DLNR and I'm working on a number of probably dozens of uh, easements for AT&amp;T and Verizon. And what they're doing is getting up and running a first responder cell service, it's separate from regular public cell service, which will go uh, I think through Haime. Uh, but it will enable all the first responders, fire uh, EMS and police to be able to communicate with each other through a cell system that won't be interrupted by a natural disaster. And uh, that's just something that behind the scenes that from what I've been seeing, um, they're putting them in just about everywhere. And what they are is their little microcell antennas and they go on top of regular utility poles and uh, is supposed to be able to enable that. So I don't know when they're going to roll it out, but for now they're doing all the infrastructure work that it needs to be able to uh, um, address all that. So it's on its way. Uh, but that's all I know for now. So if that's any kind of help, um, working with Haime especially on some of it. So uh, at some point in time, we're going to be able to provide uh, cell service for the police department, fire department and everybody else and be able to communicate with each other. And uh, that's the good news. So that's all I've got.
Mahalo, board member. So board member Ferrer, HPD brought up the fact that Hawaii is currently um, enacting the high wind protocol, the Hawaii Wireless Interoperability Network. So this is our backup system using microwave, point to point microwave system technology and robust routing systems that can withstand up to category four hurricanes. So not quite five, but four. So we have a backup system going on. And this was under the IGAZ administration where we got the funding for this. And they came before our board a while ago, uh, when they were talking about putting up the AT&amp;T structure, the green one that looked like the the tree over by Farrington Highway. So that was our, our particular mobile point. In addition to the point to point microwave, they have localized mobile telecom, mobile hotspots. Like the rest of us with T-Mobile and AT&amp;T and so forth. Um, so they have a robust system for just for the first responders and emergency communications. Okay. Awesome. Now let's go on. Thank you so much for your report and we go on to the Board of Water Supply.
Mahalo, Chair, Board, Residents and guests. This is Nikki with Board of Water Supply. Uh, we had one water main break in the Maka Kila Kapole Honokai Hala area in July. That was on July eighth, when a four inch water main installed in two thousand and one broke at two fifteen uh, Quaney Makani Place. And our general announcements this month, I just have a couple. Uh, the first one is about our Water Wisdom Program. It is designed to support condominiums and town home residents, owners and property managers in reducing water usage. So it can help lower operating costs while safeguarding our drinking water today and for generations to come. So the program is highlighted with onsite or virtual presentations that offer practical tips to reduce water usage, water audits for communal areas and personalized audits for Kupuna and conservation materials and more. And then all of these services and materials are free. For more information on that, you can go to boardofwatersupply.com/waterwisdom. And then our second announcement is, it's not in the Kapole area, uh, but our Imagine a Day Without Water event this year is on the uh, windward side. It's on September twentieth from ten AM to two PM at the Windward Mall Center Court. So we're trying to hit uh, different areas of the island each year. And with that, I'm happy to take back any questions or concerns that you may have.
Mahalo, thank you so much for the report. Um, Chair recognizes second vice chair, Dr. Kyonitati.
Yes. You know, uh, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, when we were um, working, uh, trying to keep agriculture where the um, big development is now, um, we were told at that time that uh, the, there was no more water after uh, the um, uh, divisions and so forth that were at that time already known. And that um, that we could not have any more development out here because there simply was no more water for it. Now we're going on with seven hundred and fifty people, is there seven hundred and fifty um, houses here and nine hundred uh, houses there and one thousand uh, three hundred um, hotel rooms at uh, the, the Atlantis and and on and on and on. And I'm wondering, where is all this water coming from? Do we have the water for all of the um, projects that we're now hearing about? Uh, we, we're, we're really concerned uh, recently with a project going on between Kapole Commons and uh, the Ko'olina. A large, large, large project. Is there water for that? Um, could you give us a report next time and tell us about all of the new developments that we have here? And if there is enough water for all of those that are planned? Thank you.
Mahalo, Dr. Dudley. Absolutely. We can do that for next time.
Awesome. Chair recognizes member Sheila Maderas.
I'm just going to piggyback off uh, Dr. Dudley because um, I echo his sentiments. Uh, especially with the growing developments that we have here in Kapole. So just to add to some of his questions, I've, I've written a few here and you don't have to answer it right now again. You probably have to go and research some of this or you probably can't answer it, but uh, here are some of the questions I have for the Board of Water Supply. What tracking mechanisms are in place to monitor the available water supply to support the population, particularly with the ongoing development of new homes and apartments? And we have a affordable apartments that's going to be where the houseless man is trashing, about nine hundred apartments um, that will soon be developed. What strategies are being implemented to ensure sufficient water supply for this growth? Are there plans for desalinization plants? If none exists, what are the reasons? And if they do exist, are they currently operational? And you can answer this later. I'll send this to you folks. So by next month, maybe you have an answer. Thank you.
Mahalo for that, Sheila. Um, the one I can just touch on uh, is we are working on our um, Kalailoa desalination uh, facility so that it's, it's been in the works for a while, but with everything, there's hoops and hurdles to jump through and over, uh, but we are getting closer with that. Um, as for our tracking mechanisms and our strategies for implementation, um, I'd like to come back with, to you um, next month for a more detailed answer.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions, comments or concerns from the community at large? Come on up.
Aloha Nikki, Patrick Watson. Um, two questions were with the recent Kunea fires, was there any threat to any of the uh, border water equipment in that area? Um, and secondly, haven't heard much in the news lately about the wells that were affected by Red Hill. Is there any updates to those and what it's doing to our water supply currently? Mahalo.
Mahalo, Patrick. Um, for the Kunea fires, um, as soon as the fires start up, we activate our emergency command center. Um, so we were constantly monitoring the situation and our facilities, our infrastructure were okay at the time. Um, so no concerns yet for those specific fires. Um, are wells affected by Red Hill? Uh, we, you may have heard in the news, we have um, we have filed suit. Um, I can't speak too much on that right now, uh, but we are currently in the process of that. Um, I can I can talk with our water resources and our water quality team um, about recent tests that they have done on those so that we can get you a more sufficient answer.
Any other questions, comments or concerns for the Board of Water Supply? Hearing none. Thank you so much and we look forward to receiving your homework next month. Now, um, we go to Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative. Right now they are still looking for one for us. And we have a memo that was circulated, but ultimately it's just highlights from the mayor's newsletter, which is available online at honolulu.gov/mayor/newsletter. So if you want to check out what the mayor has done, um, check that out. Uh, I will um, leave this time open. If anybody has any questions, comments or concerns for the office of the mayor, uh, we'll have some time now for questions, comments or concerns. It, seeing none. The only I want to reiterate is that was brought up during Hawaii Police Department's um, section of the agenda that the coordination for emergency response is beyond just one department. Um, so it may be better facilitated by the mayor's office. So ask if we can have the mayor's office look into coordinating a response, um, at least from the city side. Okay, awesome. No questions for the office of the mayor other than help HPD with the questions or homework? Now let's go to our um, Hawaii Department of Transportation representative, if they are on this evening. Yep, not here. No worries. They usually come about quarterly to, to inform us of major infrastructure improvements that they want to make us aware of. Now let's go to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Mahalo Chair members and community. Aloha Maikako. My name is McKenna Woodward and I'm a public policy advocate at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Mahalo for inviting me to share our updates on protecting Ivi Kupuna and investing in communities across the Piaina. Um, as you may know, OHA's work centers on three areas primarily cultural protection, community investment, and advocacy. Um, and those are what our updates relate to today. Um, next slide please. Starting with cultural protection, um, OHA advocates for preserving sacred and cultural sites, including burials and traditional properties. When development threatens these areas, OHA calls for archaeological studies, monitoring, or stop work orders if needed. One example would be at 330 Kulei Road in Kailua where 338 burials have been identified. Um, in which case OHA urged immediate monitoring and a stop work order to prevent irreparable harm. Next slide please. Next we have um, our policy and legal engagement. So in 2025, OHA reviewed 178 Oahu projects under state and federal laws, including historic preservation, environmental reviews, and permits. OHA is currently engaged in consultations on the Oahu military leases and the Aloei pedestrian bridge project. Next slide please. Oh, thank you. I'll go slower. Um, so next for cultural protection, legal and policy engagement, uh, this chart we have here shows the number of Oahu project review requests in 2025. For Makakilo Kapolei specifically, there were six review requests. Uh, next slide please. For investments in education, OHA renewed its commitment to Hawaiian-focused charter schools with a $6.78 million investment, which is benefiting nearly 4,000 homana and kumu statewide. We also fund programs like Keiki Okaaina, Ayo Eko-Veracity, and Boys and Girls Club, which strengthen cultural learning and career readiness. Next slide please. Next we have investment in economic stability. So we have grants supporting entrepreneurship and homestead initiatives such as the KCDC Homestead Night Market and the YNI Economic Development Council. We also have, um, I think it might be on the next slide, uh, the Kukulu Kahua Emergency Financial Assistant Program, which provides um, one-time emergency aid to beneficiaries and their ohana. And we also, I also did bring um, some handouts um, available today over on the table. It has a QR code. Um, if you'd like to take some of those home. And then we have the, yeah, QR code here as well. Next slide please. For our investments in health, OHA invests in programs that strengthen the well-being of the Lakuli from maternal health to Kupuna care, cultural practices, and environmental health. Some examples include Kui Malama Okekai and Waimeanalo and the Polynesian Voyaging Society's Voyage. Next slide please. Here we have some of our investments in quality housing. So OHA funds programs that support the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act and expand affordable rentals and homeownership opportunities for beneficiaries. Next slide please. And this slide and the next goes a little bit over our annual event support. So OHA sponsors major cultural events like Merry Monarch and community gatherings like Na'akama Kai's Keiki Surf Contest. Um, these events celebrate Hawaiian identity and strengthen community connections. And then we have a few more of our sponsor, sponsorships here as well. Um, including the YNI Economic Development Council. Um, and then I'm not sure if it made it on to the next slide. Um, totally okay if not, I brought a couple handouts. So um, I wanted to share um, OHA's advocacy, um, our 2026 legislative survey. So I brought a handout over on the table behind me um, with a QR code that will lead to that survey. We would love to hear your monolo on OHA's 2026 legislative priority, um, what you'd like to see from us and um, any other thoughts or concerns you might have. Um, and that's the report we have for today. So happy to take any questions, comments, concerns. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Thank you for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs being here with us tonight. Um, right off the bat, can you clarify who the community should contact for questions, comments, or concerns?
Sure. Um, so we have our um, info@ppadvocacy um, email address that I can provide afterwards. Um, I didn't bring any business cards with me today, but I also have my email address on the sign-in sheet. So I'm happy to be a resource as well. Um,
Sure. Could you tell everybody live online on Olelo who they should contact because they're not here with us in Kapolei Halei?
Sure. My name is McKenna Woodward and I'm a public policy advocate at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns for us, um, I will provide the um, informational email address to Chair afterwards and please feel free to reach out. Mahalo.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board members? Any questions, comments, or concerns from the community at large? Well, um, the only question I have is um, it the request that I got from the office that you want to come here uh, monthly or to come and present, which is totally cool. Um, um, in the future, can you focus your projects on Honokai Halei, Kapolei, and Makakilo to clarify which ones you're supporting here in our district? Uh, and surrounding districts like in YNI and like EVA, that would be super helpful for our community to understand what's happening here on the ground. Like, for example, are you supporting the Kaio Puni, which our neighborhood board has actually um, took a position to support that out here at Kapolei uh, high school um, for a new Luluhawai Hawaiian immersion high school out in Wausau'ahu. Um, I don't know what the position is, but it'd be super awesome, right? If, oh, would you just tell us what you're doing with the money in our neighborhoods? Because right now we're like, that's awesome stuff, but what are you doing over here?
Sure, absolutely.
And a few of those was over here that I could tell, like the Makaha Hawaiian Civic Club one. Yeah. But we didn't even have the Principal Hill Hawaiian, um, the Principal Hill Parade, which is a legacy parade that's here and that our board supports. So like, it's, will be super helpful. Tell us how, what you do over here.
Absolutely. I'll make sure we include that for next time. Thank you.
Now let's have our acting board liaison, Ompo Policy Board Representative, Uncle Frank Canadio.
Hello, Mr. Chair. I'll be uh, reading from a little longer report than usual. Uh, at the Citizen Advisory Committee or CAC August meeting, Ompo Executive Director Mark Garrity reported that community outreach meetings were held in Chinatown and with University of Hawaii UH Manoa students. Uh, the policy board approved revision five of the Transportation Improvement Program. Uh, Janet Mikey Law briefed on Ompo's study of the Haleiva Transportation Hub, where transportation choices would be linked. Six parcels of land were reviewed and ranked, and then public input received on the top three sites. The residents preferred a Dole Foods agricultural site with a shuttle that would be operated by the city. Ompo prefers a site inside Haleiva Town close to the commercial center. So perhaps a dual-site model would be best. Uh, Mr. Garrity said that the next study will be for a mobility hub for urban Honolulu. Peter Guarino of the Department of Transportation Services, DTS, covered proposed bus changes for opening of the second phase of Skyline. Rail service times will be increased to 4 a.m. to 10 p.m. Sunday through Thursday and 4 a.m. to 11 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. Some bus routes will be truncated such as from Makaha and Wahiwah, and service will be added from Middle Street to UH Manoa. In response to questions from CAC members, Mr. Guarino said that DTS has not yet addressed whether or not feeder buses for rail to the airport will allow check-in baggage. Uh, perhaps articulated buses will allow luggage on the new W route between the airport and Waikiki. A further discussion was held on infrastructure design with items such as adding roundabouts at intersections and removing traffic signals, adding bowl bouts at corners, and widening medians and sidewalks. In the open discussion, Mr. Chair, I spoke about my wife and I being in Waikiki awaiting family visitors when the 30 July tsunami warning was issued about 3 p.m. The family arrived from Denver at the same time and seeing the gridlock on the roads drove to higher ground at the Kamehameha Shopping Center, staying there until about 8 p.m. We left for home about 10 p.m. and encountered perhaps 30 vehicles on the entire route of Ala Malana Nimitz and H1. As we turned to head uphill from the Makakilo exit, we saw a solid two-lane caravan of vehicles heading downhill for more than two miles up to the recreation center parking lot. It is obvious that people on the Eva plane have made Makakilo a temporary tsunami evacuation zone. The next day I learned that earlier on the 30th, the right lane heading up to service station by Malama Market was backed up onto the H1. One of our friends took one and a half hours to get from the Kamakana Lea Mall to safety on our hill. The lack of a second access for Makakilo is a major safety issue and one can only imagine how many lives would have been lost if tsunamis such as the ones that devastated Aceh, Indonesia and Fukushima, Japan had actually hit the Eva plane. Uh, CAC member David Aki requested that the state and city-county transportation directors discuss the issue at a future meeting. Uh, if you look behind me, I'll take my face off the screen. Uh, that picture is of the 4,000 linear feet separating the end of Makakilo Drive from the H1. It was taken uh, for the mayor's visit. Mahalo.
Hello, Uncle Frank. Appreciate the report. Any questions, comments, or concerns from the board? Any questions, comments, or concerns from the community at large? Hearing none. Um, thank you for the report, Uncle Frank, and I'm glad you guys made it back to Makakilo safely from Waikiki. Okay. Let's now transition to the presentations for this evening. And first off, we have rapid resilience reefs for coastal defense with Kuleana Coral Restoration and their partners, Department of Transportation and the University of Hawaii. Come on down.
Hello Chair, hello board members and hello community. Uh, my name is Alika Garcia. I'm the Executive Director of a nonprofit, Kuleana Coral Restoration. Uh, we're based uh, here on the west side. Uh, we're based out of Ko'olina, but we um, Malama the reefs all the way from Poka Bay all the way to Manaloo Bay. So pretty much the whole south and west shores. Uh, and we call Hani'ou, which is a traditional name for the waters outside of the Ko'olina area. Um, our home, that's where we're based out of. So um, a lot of coral restoration, protection, and monitoring in that area. And I'm here today to introduce this uh, pretty ambitious uh, project is R3D or Rapid Resilient Reefs. And uh, I'll let the experts behind me go into the details in a minute. Um, but basically what it is, is an artificial reef structure. Uh, that's going to be a living structure that we plant live coral on. And the intention is to reduce wave energy that impacts the shore, protect infrastructure on land. Um, as well as uh, as a fisherman that grew up fishing in these waters. Uh, it's supposed to make more fish. So I'm excited about that. And it's a pilot project. So there's a lot of uncertainty, but um, I think we're very hopeful that uh, we'll learn a lot from this and it'll have a lot of implications for not only our communities here on the west side, but uh, also the rest of the state. Um, Kuleana Coral's role in this, uh, if it does go through, um, is that we would be the ones uh, essentially farming the coral and planting them onto the structure once it's in the water. Um, so providing that living kind of breakwater that we talked about. Um, and Kuleana Coral's kind of history in this work, we've been doing this uh, for six years. We're a pretty new organization. Again, all based uh, on the west side. Um, and we have a program that does um, training and job uh, that workforce development with partnered with uh, the Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement uh, that focuses on projects just like this, if they reach scalability, to create well-paying jobs uh, for our local residents and that program where we've had our third cohort and it's focused for Wausau'ahu residents. So I'm looking at this as a great opportunity for coastal protection, fish, and jobs for our people that can live and survive in Hawaii. And I'll turn it over to uh, the brains of the operation uh, from both the University of Hawaii and Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Alika. Uh, and aloha and mahalo again to the board and the community for having us tonight. I'm Ben Jones. I'm an oceanographer at the University of Hawaii and the principal investigator for R3D. I'm fortunate to be here with two of our newest partners, Kuleana, as you already heard from Alika, uh, and Genevieve Sullivan, who's here from the Department of Transportation. So I think I'll let I think you want to take the first slide. We'll talk about DOT's piece in this and then we'll get into some details on the project.
Thanks, Ben. Aloha to everybody. My name is Genevieve Sullivan and I'm with the Department of Transportation. I'm the resilience coordinator. Um, I've been there for about 10 years and we've been working on a lot of our vulnerability assessments um, as well as sort of our toolbox for different types of resilience projects. Um, so that comes to uh, fish pond restoration as well as pilot projects such as this, the hybrid reef. It's really just looking to put more tools in our toolbox um, so that we don't have to always go with the traditional shoreline hardening or rock revetment type projects. Um, so we have become recent uh, partners in this project and are hoping that it's successful so that we could deploy it in other areas around the state where we have some of our most vulnerable highway coastal segments.
Good. Yeah. So is uh, I'll talk to us really briefly about the prop, the, really the goals of the project um, and set the stage here. Uh, the problem, as many of you know, um, coastal erosion caused by, in some cases, rising seas, uh, increased storm events. Um, we see these impacts around our communities and, and on islands in particular, particular, you know, these impacts on infrastructure, roads that connect communities, um, businesses are really critical. Um, next slide. Uh, in, in parallel to this, we have impacts going on to our coral reefs. So um, increased temperature of the oceans, uh, in addition to, in, in some cases, um, added sedimentation pollution is, is really dramatically uh, impacting our coral reefs, which provide up to 90% of protection from wave energy uh, from our coastlines. Uh, the loss of these resources are obviously uh, not natural and cultural resource losses to our communities. Um, so this is the second really one-two punch that we're seeing to our coastlines. Side. Um, this, the traditional way that we've solved these problems in the past has been coastline hardening. So these are seawalls, groynes, jetties. Um, you're familiar with some of these. You see them in Waikiki and on other parts of the island. The challenges are that they have impacts to adjacent coastlines. They prevent access in some cases for both recreation, cultural practices. In some cases, it's largely, not largely, I shouldn't say that, but really aesthetics also play a part of this. And so a proposal and Eva many years ago to put in a, a sheet pile while met with a strong community, community resistance. Excellent. So in 2021, uh, the DARPA, uh, Defense Research Organization put out a call for proposals to develop um, a living breakwater. So this is a hybrid, natural and engineered uh, breakwater system um, out of, that is designed to create a living coral reef ecosystem. Uh, a group of, a collab, collaborative group of laboratories from University of Hawaii, uh, two other academic institutions, which has now grown. Um, and industry partners here on the island proposed to this and were awarded this project uh, in 2022. Our concept was shown here, which is really close to our 2021 concept uh, is a, is inspired by fringing, a natural fringing reef. So this is a distributed set of breakwater modules, which you can see here. Um, and a fringing reef can extend thousands of yards off the shore, um, a natural fringing reef. Um, these reduce wave energy gradually over large extents uh, of space. And that's uh, those kind of natural principles is what we've taken advantage of here in our design. Additionally, um, we incorporate several technologies I'll talk a little more about in a future slide that, that will um, enhance the, the growth of this ecosystem to bring uh, what is largely a concrete breakwater to a living uh, ecosystem um, in a matter of months to years rather than decades to centuries. Excellent. So where are we now? Uh, current development. So we've been producing these large five to seven foot kind of uh, shipping container-sized breakwater modules. Um, those act as the base structure. They're porous, as you can see. Um, organism, you know, marine animals can, can flow in and out of these uh, structures. Uh, but they're porous also because that's the design to um, reduce the wave energy uh, through turbulence rather than through steep breaking ways. And what this does is it allows us to um, also um, And what this does is it allows us to also equip the system with habitat structures that can encourage coral settlement. You see that on the top right. This is, these habitat structures were designed by the Geometric Ecology Lab at the University of Hawaii. It will naturally entrain coral larvae and also have fixtures on them so that we can outplant corals of opportunity that are lifted from the site. Other technologies that we're incorporating are different techniques to outplant native coral species from the area that will grow rapidly to help skin over much of the structure. And then along the bottom, on the bottom left, is just a small inset showing acoustic enrichment. This is playing sounds of healthy coral reefs. This has been shown previously and through experiments we've done to encourage plant-eating fish into the area, which help graze back the algae that competes so strongly with our, with our native coral. And finally, we have some other biotechnologies. These are biomaterials, mostly of natural materials from the environment, that either encourage coral to settle or can help coral survive better post-settlement. Next slide. This is a picture of a couple of the structures. I'm glad we're showing these. Like I said, they're pretty large. These are seven, five feet tall. They're built right here in Kapalei, so two of the precast yards. We're really the two big precast yards on the island. We're currently, just finished building these in the past year, and now they're staged here in Kapalei for deploying it. Next slide. So I'm somewhat embarrassed to say, typically, we come to a community not with a, we've built this, we're here. In 2021, we reached out to the Kolo'oko Hawaiian Civic Club and began our discussions with the community on potentially putting this system in Kaileua Bay off the Marine Corps Base. Since that time, the state and federal government had quieted a lengthy discussion about this, and there have been some submerged land disputes that has nothing to do with our project. But needless to say, the project will not go into Kaileua Bay. So since that time, we've been engaging, as you can see, in the older engagements at the bottom, they were windward groups. We've begun engaging the past year, groups in this area, Kalailoa, including Heritage Park, Heritage Legacy, and Legacy Foundation. Last week, we were at the Kapalei Hawaiian Civic Club, and tonight we're with you. We're looking for feedback, questions, and really, we're not interested in doing something the community doesn't want. So this is our opportunity really to hear from you, and I'll be here after the meeting as well, if folks want to talk one-on-one. Next slide. So the potential site we're looking at is off of Park Y, off of Campbell Industrial Park, so off the leeward coast. This is north of the Kalailoa Beach Park. The reason we're looking at this site, we scanned the entire island looking for a similar slope, similar bathymetry, similar somewhat degraded reef to the site that we previously had, that we were calling Ulupau, which is off of Ulupau Crater near Marine Corps Base. We found a very similar site here off of Campbell Industrial Park and started investigating it more thoroughly. We conducted some surveys, and that is one very good potential site. I'll leave it at that. I see I'm running out of time. Next slide. This is what the laydown would look like. On the top, the right panel shows two rows of these large reef crest structures with a distributed array of back reef structures. All of these would have habitat for coral and supporting reef organisms. And that's just showing one of the colonies that are there on the seafloor. So we do know coral can grow in this area. So it's a degraded reef, but it's alive. End with that. Right on time. Questions?
Board members? Chair recognizes Board Member Moon Kahale.
Thank you for your pretty awesome presentation. Can you grow a lemur on that thing?
We had a very long conversation about lemur last week at the...
So you're not sure?
So we don't know. We do, we are interested in the lemur, you know, we know how important lemur is and how it has, historically, there has been lemur along these beaches when there was, when there was fresh water output. We've had some good discussions about that. We don't know. We would like to find out, and it's a great question. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Second Vice Chair Dr. Kellie Dudley.
I'm not really clear. Your second last slide kind of had a little green spot, and...
Yeah, can you go back to that slide if that's, is that okay? Maybe not.
Okay.
Please, sir.
The question I have is, is it just the green spot? Is that the only place you're putting it? Or is it really going to be a reef that's going to go for a long ways, or what?
So this is a, this, we call this a prototype, so it's a proof of concept. So the initial deployment, or the deployment that we have developed through this research effort is a fifty-meter by about seventy-meter footprint. So it is that, it is in fact that green footprint. So it's relatively small compared to the coastline. It's really so that we can measure the performance of the system. It will not protect a coastline, it will not generate, you know, a coastline-scale coral reef, but we will be able to measure the performance against wave energy and see the health of the coral and the growth of the ecosystem.
And if it's successful, then what?
If this is successful, we're working closely with a transition partner and Hawaii Department of Transportation to look at sites where this would be needed and desired to protect coastlines. And then you would take what we've learned here, and you would design a system similar, using this technology to protect that coastline. But it wouldn't be necessarily, more likely, more than likely, would not be an extension of this system unless that was desirable. And right now, we're not seeing that that is, that is necessarily a coastline that is looking for protection in that way.
And so offshore, eventually, you would have another reef made out of those cement things, and it would go along for miles?
It really is dependent on the need, the specific part of the coastline. So we've taken some looks along the windward coast where there's significant erosion along the roadways. And in some sections, it might be a relatively narrow section. In other areas, it may need, you know, several thousand yards to protect a coastline. So it's very specific to the coastline. What are the, you know, the outfalls, the stream outfalls? Where are those? Because we don't want, we wouldn't want to block kind of the return flow. So just to say, every site is somewhat unique and would need to be customized. In short, though, to protect a coastline, we expect you would need five hundred to a thousand yards minimum to actually prevent the waves from reforming on the inside and still impacting the coastline.
And so what you're trying to do is to protect the sand on the shore rather than protect the shore and the, and land behind it from a tsunami or something like that?
So this system isn't designed to protect against a tsunami, but it is, it is designed to protect coastlines from large storm waves which create run-up and flooding on a beach. The long, very, very long period of a tsunami, it really wouldn't heal these structures. It would go right over and right around them. But for large storm waves, that is what this is designed for. So if a close approach of a hurricane, that is what this is designed for. And to reduce just overall erosion from prevailing swell. On this coast, it's northwest, southwest prevailing swell. Thank you, sir.
Mahalo. Chair recognizes Member Carol England.
Hi, thank you. I'm on that one slide that has all the pictures. And so I'm just really interested in your acoustic enrichment, because I was researching it, and it's like you're drawing the fish, and it's supposed to help grow the coral with sound?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. So this is a partner of ours from Scripps Institute of Oceanography at UCSD. He is a, he's an acoustic landscape expert. And so what they have learned over the years is that many species of fish are attracted to reefs because of the sounds. And so when you have a degraded reef, you lose the critters that make the sounds, largely crustaceans, snapping shrimp, those sort of things. You lose those sounds, the natural, well, the grazers, really, your herbivores that come and graze back the algae. They think, no, it doesn't sound like a healthy reef over there, probably not anything to eat. And so when you have those healthy sounds, it encourages those plant-eating fish into the area. The reason that's important is because the algae is the primary competitor to baby coral. So when coral are in their larval form, and they settle down, they find a piece of good substrate to settle on, then they're in immediate competition with algae.
And it, how do you get the electricity? It seems like there's a wiring system.
These are just battery-powered, so we have a housing that holds the battery, and they've developed, that's been part of the development here, is to develop a long-term battery system and speaker system. So we have both active speaker systems that play the sounds, and then speakers for monitoring, because we also know that you can monitor the biodiversity of a site by the acoustic signal, you know, what it sounds like. So we'll be both broadcasting sounds and measuring the sounds of the reef as it grows and becomes more diverse.
You've got this cooling and feeding apparatus here, too, so it's very, very...
Yeah, that's a system that during bleaching periods that will turn on lights, which encourages zooplankton. So, you know, all the, all the little tiny plankton and the water pollen to accumulate. For anybody who's done the manta ray feeding exhibits at night that you see on Big Island. So it's same thing. It encourages the zooplankton to accumulate, and the coral can actually feed on zooplankton. It can help them through bleaching periods.
So you're approaching us and the committee, I mean, our community, just to say that we would like to do this prototype, type in...
In these waters. That's exactly right.
I wanted to share as well that we really plan on making the monitoring and the findings publicly available, so that we can all learn from it and have it on our project website as well.
Any questions, comments, or concerns from the community at large? Come on up.
So my name's William Albritton, and I live in Makakilo. And this just sounds like the most, best idea I've heard in a long time, and just encouraging and good to hear that we have a way to improve the coral reefs around our island. I'm a former scuba diver and surfer now, and yeah, anything like this, if we try to improve the reefs, prevent erosion, I'm a bind hundred, a hundred and ten percent. It just sounds great. One question I did have, though, I'm assuming these are designed to remain in place? And if that's the case, how does, how does, you know, make sure it doesn't move around too much, storms and whatnot?
Yeah, great question. So the first two sets of reef crest structures, as I said, they're, they're large, they're also heavy, so they're, they're primarily remain in place just through their self-balance, but the two rows that will receive the largest amount of wave energy will be anchored to the seafloor. So that's in our plans now, is really a micropile system that puts in small piles and anchors each of the reef crest structures. So that's an important part of it. We did some initial testing on the anchoring system, and we've also done wave loading in lab settings and also in very large-scale wave flume experiments, the largest wave flume facility in the, in the country, actually, at Oregon State. So we have the data on that and are working that into the anchoring plan.
Chair recognizes Dr. Kellie Dudley.
I'd just like to know, is there any reason why we wouldn't want that?
The anchoring or the system?
No, no, your whole system. Is there any reason we wouldn't want it?
So the concern, it's a great question. So the concerns that we've heard from the community that I think, I think all the concerns we have heard are valid is, how might a system like this impact migrations of fish? We've talked about the ama ama migrations around the island that are very important. How might this affect access, recreation, surf breaks? Those sorts of questions. So that's another consideration that went into site location was whether or not it was an active surfing location, whether we would preclude any access, which with such a small structure really doesn't preclude any access. So those are some of the things on the environmental side. You know, we've taken a lot, we had a lot of discussion about impacts to marine animals, which is, you'll see, I have, I actually have models in my bag, but can't quite see on those, but we have very large escape holes on the top of the structures to make sure that turtles and monk seals can easily escape. So we've heard a lot of concerns. I think we've been trying to address them, but that's why we reach out to the communities to hear more.
My question is on timetable. What's the time horizon for the project and any plans for decommissioning? Or are you decommissioning in place?
So I'll answer the last question first. The plan is that this grows into a healthy reef, and no one wants to remove it. It'd be grown over with coral and doing well. So that would be the, you know, the planned decommissioning of the system, remain in place, doing its job. The timetable, right now, we're in the community engagement and permitting process. We've made it through an initial wicket of federal permitting, but really, the big part of the permitting is the state permitting process. So we're just at the beginning of that. Department of Transportation is a huge partner in getting, in helping us work through the permitting process. And then our goal is to deploy as early as the end of this calendar year.
Sorry.
Yeah, so after, yeah, and there is, the last slide, if people look back through the board minutes, the last slide does have a timeline. It was a backup slide. But following the development of the permitting, there is a thirty-day community public review of the, of this state permitting. And so we'll also be looking for comments there. So hopefully, some of you will drop some of those encouraging comments.
Yeah. Yeah, on the topic of the decommissioning, one of the byproducts of this project is a coral nursery structure that we're proposing, that, you know, we talked about, we're kind of the farmers of coral is our role. And that was like a big incentive, I think, for this project, is that remaining after the project, being a huge kind of asset to our community and, you know, the work that we do along the entire west coast, to have that, you know, that funding and that, just that infrastructure there that otherwise West Oahu would not be offered, is a big thing that, you know, it's not going to be decommissioned, I hope, of the project. So I think that's also in the permitting phase. And then to your question about the acoustic stuff, I have some recordings. We've been taking baseline recordings along the whole west side. So we've been playing it for kids and stuff, like this is what a healthy reef sounds like, this is what an unhealthy reef sound like, and this is what your backyard sounds like. And it's not good. And what are we going to do about it? So yeah, it's really cool technology that, we're hoping this project has a lot of avenues that will really, yeah, bring a lot of really good information.
So thank you very much for the presentation. Yep, come on up.
I have one question, because I actually do really want to see the, oh, I'm Leslie Kitting, resident. But I really want to see it succeed. I guess my only concern is, because my husband's worked in refining forever, I know what CAR is. It's the oil, you know, refining, and it's noisy. And have you guys done tests already on the noise solution that might already be there from the refinery? I just, I really want to see it succeed, so I'm hoping that there's...
You need to cover, can you speak into the microphone and to the chair?
I'm really hoping that, sorry, yeah. I'm hoping that this project succeeds, but I guess because I know a little bit about refineries, their noise, the pollution, I'm worried about it not going as well as it could at an otherwise less noisy industrial site. However, I definitely think the need, if it can be improved there, that would be great. I guess I just didn't realize that the animals were so attuned to noise. And so that's why the question for them.
Yeah, thank you for that question. We haven't taken measurements of the noise out there directly, but early, an early stage of the monitoring will include collecting passive acoustic measurements from the site and other sites, such as those that Alika mentioned, that we know a more healthy coral reef exists. So thank you for that.
Awesome. Thank you for the presentation, and best of luck. Thanks, Dr. Kellie Dudley.
Can we have a motion to support the project?
Not at this time. We can agendize it for a future agenda.
Okay.
Next for us is Kapalei Civic. Next uh for us is Kapolei City Lights Project from Departments of Parks and Recreation.
Aloha, my name is Arlene Lord-Isabel. I'm with the Department of Parks and Recreation. I am here this evening to humbly request the board's support for our Kapolei City Lights event coming up this year. This year, we are looking at Saturday, December sixth for our opening night. And it will be, we'll have lights and up until January fourth. So for opening night, we are planning to have our event from five to nine. And this year, our parade will start at five thirty instead of six. And we will be starting same point, Kapolei High School and come down Kapolei Parkway and land here at uh next slide please. So here's our route. It is still pending approval, but we are not changing anything from previous ones. Next slide please. So block party similar to last year. The difference with this this year is we're bringing back our Cook pine instead of the fifty foot mega tree. So that'll be nice to see during the day. And instead of the mega tree, uh Shawaloha would like to have their tunnel in front of the halle. So that'll be something nice, right? Yes. So Shawaloha will still be working with us this year to put on lights on the exterior. And like I said, we're having the Cook pine again, so traditional again. Um, next slide. We will be doing, um, we're, we will be asking for vendors and parade participants to apply. In September, we're still updating our applications. So please, if you know anybody that would like to participate, that will be on our website. So keep an eye out for that. And we'll be doing public outreach to our community residents in October. Next slide please. Okay, so these are the big things I think that affect the Hali and community. We will be restricting parking on Ulu Ohia in October for the exterior lights. And in November for the Cook pine to come and get installed as well as the interior displays. So if you are members of the community and you would like to have a tree displayed inside, please let me know. And in December, of course, that first week of December, we'll be doing a final preparations for the event on Saturday, December sixth. Next slide. So that is my presentation. I am seeking your support again for Saturday, December sixth. From five to nine o'clock, I think on the agenda that said each. So it is till nine with parade beginning at five thirty.
Um, Chair recognizes First Vice Chair Mikayala Lindstone.
Mahalo. As you know, we have an increasing population, especially with the village um, um Kapolei Parkway. There's a lot more people that live along Kapolei Parkway. Last year, there were a lot of people. This year, there's going to be a way lot more people. We don't have a lot of big events in this area, in this region. So when there is a big event, everyone comes out. I'm really, really worried about security. I'm really, really worried about population, about the amount of people that are going to be congested in a small amount of, in a small area during that time. Because I've been to this event every single year and it gets more and more congested, more and more crowded. There's less and less space and you're like this. Um, I think this year is going to be really, really chaotic if there is not pre-planning for that ahead of time. Are you folks planning for that? Please say yes.
Yes, of course. We are working closely with HPD, especially with the new roads opening up. So working closely with HPD as well as DTS to ensure that the residents of the area can still get in and out as well as ensure the safety of the people and the residents.
Please use the neighborhood watch as well, because the neighborhood watch, they're us. They're our community members. The neighborhood watch will help. Please use them, please pay them, um, because they do good work. But I think you need as many, as many people out there on this particular day. So it's a, it's a festive day. And we don't have a lot of social unrest because there's kind of social, a lot of, when we have big events here. Mahalo.
Yes, we do work with the Neighborhood Safety Watch. They've been volunteering with us for the past few years. They're amazing, amazing. So yes, we'll be tapping, asking them for help as well as we are putting more staff along the parade route because I think that's where the issues are. So yes, we are prepared for that. Thank you for that.
Any other questions, comments or concerns from board members? Chair recognizes Board Member Carol England.
Okay, for the Christmas tree, what are the dates to put them up?
The dates for installing the Christmas trees inside are November seventeen through twenty first. You're welcome. Thank you. Mahalo.
Board Member Munkahele.
Thank you for your energetic presentation. Um, yeah, we're looking forward to anything festive during the holiday season. At the end of the, the parade, what is going to be set up in front of Kapolei? Can you tell us vendors, food trucks, stages?
Above, above. So we're going to have a stage in front of the halle, starting from five o'clock with live music. Um, of course, they will continue to perform until about eight forty-five where we kind of have to start slowing things down because they went ends at nine. And we want to be respectful because they're residents in the area. Um, also happening from five o'clock are food trucks, food vendors and as well as other product vendors, whether it's craft or other items, non-food items. So that will be happening from five till nine. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, concerns from board members? Any questions, comments or concerns for the Kapolei City Lights? From the community at large, in person or online? Okay, nothing at all? And this, oh, come on up.
My name is Maggie Richia Gore here in Kapolei. My question is, would we ever consider, because of keeping everything nice and organized, would we ever consider like the seating? What is it like the, like the stadium seats, but bleachers? Yeah, so that would keep maybe a little bit more organized and people sitting in one area. Because I know everybody comes and they have their own chairs and, you know, yeah. So just to see if there's through that route of the parade, would we ever consider that?
I, I love that idea. Unfortunately, we will not have any bleacher seating this year. We can look into something like that for future years. When we have it at our budget to make purchases like that. But unfortunately, no, we do not have any kind of bleacher seating here. Very sorry, but we'll look into that. We will have a kupuna, like kupuna seating area for the entertainment. But that's not along the parade route. I'm sorry. This year also along the parade, but we will have Olano streaming. So thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. They did that for us last year. Yes, any other?
Any other questions, comments or concerns? Okay, seeing none. Um, the chair did hear that there was a request for support. And Dr. Dudley did raise the issue of support before. We have given, been given guidance that is been ambiguous about whether or not we can do that, given the agenda. So we're going to try something and if it doesn't work, then we'll put it on the agenda next month to do it again. So at this time, the chair recommends that we amend the agenda to add a position for rapid resilience reefs for coastal defense, R three D, and for Kapolei City Lights um at this time under presentations for A and B. It's been moved by First Vice Chair Mikayala Lindstone. Is there a second? Second by Munkahele. Okay, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any kanalua or abstentions? Hearing none, Chair calls it unanimous. Okay, now it's on the agenda. Now let's take it up, whether or not we want to support rapid resilience reefs for coastal defense, R three D. And at this point, we have to allow for public testimony. So anybody in the community wish to testify on the rapid resilience reefs for coastal defense at this time? Hearing no one, coming for testimony once, going twice, going three times. Okay, Chair's recommendation is that we support the project. Is there a motion? It's been moved by Dr. Kelly Dudley. Is there a second?
Second.
And second by multiple people including Munkahele. Any discussion from fellow board members? Hearing no discussion. Yeah, go right ahead.
Um, after, after I received this um in my email, I went ahead and did some more research. And it, I think it's a fantastic program, um, as much as I could get off of line, but it makes sense. And I even went to other countries that have a resilience reef program. And it's not as advanced as yours um proposal. So I truly think it's a, it's a good thing that we can have it here and to try it. Just try it and see how it works.
Any other discussion from board members? Chair recognizes Munkahele.
I know I made a mention earlier about limo being grown off that, that item. But if there's some way you can get growth through it all, it's an additional seller. And I will, I'm pure Hawaiian, and if I see something growing in the ocean, it's fabulous. So it's something that, you know, you may want to consider, guys. Thank you, Chair.
Any other discussion from fellow board members? Seeing no discussion. Are there any objections? Going once, going twice, going three times, no objections. Chair calls it unanimous. Right on. Congratulations. You got our support. And if you don't have it from a technical issue, because we just violated the sunshine law, we'll do it again next month. Okay, now for a position on Kapolei City Lights for twenty twenty-five. Chair recommends that we support even though there's no bleachers. Is there a motion? Move by Munkahele, second by Mikayala Lindstone. Okay, is there any public testimony on whether or not we should have the Kapolei City Lights for twenty twenty-five? It's your time to testify. Come on down. One, going once, going twice, going three times. Okay? Testimony closed. Okay. Any further discussion from fellow board members? Hearing no discussion. Any objections to us supporting Kapolei City Lights? Seeing no one moving to object, Chair calls it unanimous. Congratulations. You got our support. Okay, awesome. Hopefully they don't gong our line and tell us we got to do it again. But if we have to, we will. Now let's welcome up this evening our third presentation for H CBA Kalailoa Plan and the Rules Update.
Good, good evening, Chair Paris, First Vice Chair Lidstone and also HCA Board Member and Neighborhood Board Members. Uh, I'm joined here. Uh, my name is Ryan Tam. I'm the Director of Planning and Development at the Hawaii Community Development Authority. I'm joined here by Mr. Craig Nakamoto, who is our Executive Director.
Welcome, mahalo. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Um, so we're here basically to talk about the update to the Kalailoa Master Plan and Rules. We are having public hearings um at our H CDA Board Meeting. Presentation hearing next week, Wednesday. I'll talk about that at the end. Um, and then a decision-making hearing in November, beginning of November. And so again, we're here just to make sure that we assure effective citizen participation in government. So really glad, glad to be here. Again, uh, this process started in twenty twenty. Um, in twenty twenty-two, we had a H CDA Board Presentation, Community Meetings. We went to the Rotary Club. Twenty twenty-three, we had another series of H CDA Board and Community Meetings. Twenty twenty-four, we had a, we came to the Neighborhood Board and also had a public hearing. Again, the reason what we're doing, the original Kalailoa Master Plan uh was adopted uh in two thousand and six after the district was transferred to the Hawaii Community Development Authority in two thousand and two. And the administrative rules, which uh set up the zoning and the um processes for permitting uh was adopted in twenty twelve. So it's been a long time. Um, and these documents need to be modernized and updated. Uh, next slide please. So again, the overall master, the vision for the master plan that's been developed over the last couple of years. Again, it's to balance um creating social value, um, you know, with housing connectivity in open space. Balancing that with economic development and employment, so creating infrastructure to support more industry and jobs. And then bringing that all together uh in balance uh by designing with sustainability and associate socio-economic equity. And I'll talk about the concept of a fifteen to twenty minute city uh in a second. The um, one thing that we've heard and that we've been trying to work in over the last couple of years uh into the plan is to really consider the uh historic and cultural uh history of the, of the area and the identity. For example, the Maldon Trails uh and a lot of the other uh important features like the sinkholes and uh battlefield. Next slide please. So again, the main concept um for Kalailoa is to, again, focus on trying to serve all your needs within a fifteen to twenty minute um community. So within a five-minute walk, for example, uh, all of your kind of ordinary daily needs in the neighborhood would be uh met. So that's a upper left-hand corner. Uh, broader uses uh within the region uh would be within a twenty-minute uh walk. So it's about a three-quarter mile. So it's uh on the lower left corner. And then within the regional activities, within a twenty-minute bike ride or transit ride, you know, connecting to the rail, for example. You know, cultural, medical uses, regional shopping or entertainment. So that's the idea is to make sure that we um shape this community to be more sustainable, conserve resources and use less energy. Next slide please. So one of the changes that we're uh making in our plan, it's what we talked about uh last year, two thousand and four. But is we're adopting kind of the use of floor area ratios as a way to regulate the building development. So instead of kind of density numbers, it's more about kind of the, the form, urban form and the density. So in Kalailoa, um, we don't use the same zoning um districts as the city. We have what's called transics. And so in T two, Transit two, uh, we have a rural zone, for example. Um, and for that, uh, we might allow, you know, twenty-eight foot high buildings, you know, one to two stories in height. T three uh is a mixed-use zone and that's what we see throughout most of Kalailoa today um and would continue. Again, three to four-story high buildings, um mix of residential, commercial, industrial uses. Uh, T four is the general urban, a little higher, uh seventy-five foot high, five to six stories. And then T five is the urban center, uh, up to ninety feet and seven to nine stories. Next slide please. Um, the Ts, you can see uh the T zones, uh, T two is in, in green. Uh, T three is in orange. Uh, that's a mixed-use. T four is a general urban in pink. And T five urban center is in the deeper purple. Um, what, one of the big changes that we're looking at doing is kind of moving more of the density, uh, the, the darker purple, T five urban center. In previous plans, it was more in the central, kind of the historic downtown neighborhood. We're trying to move it up to uh closer towards Roosevelt Avenue. Um, in red, the red line along Saratoga Avenue, that's in the middle, you could still see that's intended to be kind of the main street, the core of a Kakako, oh, sorry, Kalailoa. And then in the upper right corner, you can see the uh of a battlefield uh historic district. That's the dashed uh line. Next slide. Again, the, one of the reasons why we're looking at kind of moving the density closer to Roosevelt is kind of this idea that, you know, should the city extend uh the rail line beyond uh East Kapolei, Koala Kua Station. We're now thinking that maybe it would be better suited to go along Roosevelt Avenue uh as opposed to swinging down through uh the heart of Kalailoa, which is always planned in two thousand and six. You know, almost twenty years. You know, almost 20 years ago. Uh, next slide. Uh, one of the other key features in the uh master plan and our rules is kind of the thoroughfare plan. You know, one thing that we did learn last year, um, when we came to the Neighborhood Board was that the connection from Eva Beach to um Kalailoa was actually really important. And so one, so we actually put that back onto our map and we're trying to work with uh uh different entities out there uh to see how maybe Triple E, Triple E Street could be connected. Um, so we know that connection is important. Uh, the other thing about a thoroughfare plan, we've also previously, the state and city had plans to put new rights of way through the Eva Plain Battlefield, which was uh listed as historic site in 2016. So we're now kind of removing those from our plan and showing that as maintaining as being preserved and interpreted. So again, the routing would be a little different. Uh, other, other connectivity, again, uh, Molokai La Street, uh, connecting that up to Waikia Street Extension. Next slide. Uh, we do have a lot of administrative rules that we are updating. So that's to get greater consistency in terms of processes. We're now looking at being a lot more consistent with city definitions, uh, just trying to make it a lot easier for developers, for people to uh do things. We've also removed the off-street parking minimums to be consistent with the city. Again, make it more uh, more efficient and promote transit. Next slide. Um, talked a little bit about this last year, but again, we're proposing uh right now in the, in the middle column, we have a very um limited set of permit, permits that we can issue. Some of which require extensive hearings and extensive processes. So we're now proposing a, a more kind of uh granular permitting system, which should make it easier to develop uh projects. Next slide. Again, we have a form-based code that's uh focused on really creating a good urban environment. Next slide. Um, in our plan, where staff has been looking at different ways of um maybe balancing development and interpretation and, and preservation in the Eva Plain Battlefield. And so we've been developing some luster of concepts for that. Again, this was the first place that was attacked on December 4th, uh, sorry, December 7th, 1941. It's attacked a few minutes before Pearl Harbor, so it is, is important. Next, next slide. Um, and then um, as a separate project, uh, H C D A is also working on an infrastructure master plan. Uh, we should be getting that um uh drafted closer towards the end of the year. And um, we've also got a number of projects where we're working to upgrade uh some of the electrical facilities, uh, working with the Navy. We've got $18 million uh to transfer some customers off the Navy grid. And then we also have a project on Saratoga Avenue to upgrade that. Next, next slide. So the next steps, again, we have a presentation hearing on September 3rd, 2025, uh, followed by a decision-making hearing November 5th. All the uh current draft plan rules, hearing notice, that's all uh can be found on the H C D A website. Uh, we do uh encourage everyone to take a look at that. We are still looking for comments. Um, it's still very much a work in progress. Uh, comments are due September 16th, 17th of uh and so you can write a submit it via email, uh, there's a web form mail, but we do need it by the 16th through 17th. With that, uh, subject to your questions, members.
Mahalo for the presentation. Any question, comments or concerns from the board? We'll start with Board Member Sheila Maderas.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I'm sorry, I'm just a, I'm, I'm just a little frustrated, not with you, it's just, um, I understand development. And I understand that there are people that need homes. But I also see the realities of our resources. They're not unlimited. Our vi, like Dr. Dudley had mentioned, um, waste management, we're still battling the Waianae Ala Gulch. Schools, every developer that's come before us. There's no plan for schools. Kapolei High School's maxed out. We have elementary schools, we have schools in Eva that has, they, they are transferring students to Kapolei. Hospitals, right now we have Queens West, the only hospital right now uh servicing the side. Now you're, you're talking about the density. That means a lot more people that need to be accommodated to use all of these limited resources, energy. I know Hiko was having a hard time just powering Kalailoa during that build. Now your development here is much more. And if they get the sky rail to go to Kalailoa, we're talking about even more power. So I, I, I am, I'm just concerned that our Board of Water Supply, Hiko, Waste Management, our education system, are they sitting down with you folks and going over all of these issues? Because this, this has to be resolved before things start being developed, because we do not have the capacities for schools right now for more kids. Otherwise, somebody needs to build more schools, build another hospital, so it can meet the needs of the people. That's all I have, thank you.
Mahalo Board Member for raising the concerns that the board has made regarding the lack of infrastructure. We appreciate that H C B A's role is to help with master planning and providing guidance through its rulemaking process. So in your rulemaking process, do you require or check on the load in beyond the region? Whether or not there's enough for water, wastewater treatment, education and other facilities that might not be made onsite?
Yeah, so that's all part of the development permit process. So before we allow, you know, developments to come in, uh, the, the H C A Board, Kalailoa Board has to uh evaluate, has to, the developer has to consult uh with all these agencies. They all have to uh provide documentation that they, that there is capacity. Um, and then the, the board can decide uh on that. So it's all part of the decision-making process. Um, but that is also why we are undertaking this, this infrastructure, infrastructure master plan, which again is going to be completed, uh, drafted up late, later this year. Um, so we are inactive, we actively work with uh the Kalailoa Water Company. Kalailoa does have a private, it is a private water system uh inherited from the Navy. And so we work, we meet with them monthly. And so they're looking at um fixing a lot of their leaks and, and trying to upgrade their system. I think R1, the use of recycled water is also a key part of the strategy on getting the Gulf, the Navy Gulf Force to use more R1 water. And um, a lot of the new developments uh that are going in, in Kalailoa actually already have the, the R1 pipes uh as part of the development, so they just need to get hooked in. And so Kalailoa Water Company, they're looking at getting uh the right, the approval to um distribute and sell the R1 water that's created by the city at Honolulu Water Waste Plant. So there, there's a lot of capacity there that we're looking to use. So yeah, the resources are certainly a, a big, uh, big concern. Yeah. Yeah.
Mahalo for the response. Um, we'll now go to Board Member Carol England.
I'd like to address um screen number eight, and it's about your administrative rules update. Under environment, what does more flexible green building standards mean?
Um, so in the, in our previous rules, I think uh, and it, it's been a while since I've looked at this particular provision, but um, we had required, I think, like LEED certification or something like that. So I think we're trying to make it a little more flexible. Yeah. More flexible so that instead of necessarily getting, you know, those types of certifications, that there might be other, other ways. But they can do that.
Green buildings, meaning solar or?
Yeah, no, I mean, solar, I mean, that's all, uh, that's all allowed and promoted.
And thank you for putting street, um, trees on the streets, you know? That's always something that's needed here on the west side is more shade. So it's forward-thinking of putting trees for, on the streets like your pictures?
Yeah, and so, and the, in terms of street trees, like for that, for example, we're um kind of deferring to the city standard. So previously, H C D A had very, you know, uh, specific tree species that were desired. So we're trying to make it more flexible, um, defer to the city and uh what they want. Yeah, and just to, again, just to go back to the green building standards, yeah, again, um you know, their ratings, like LEED, Leadership for Environmental, you know, there's systems that they, that that, you know, architects, developers use to certify how their buildings are sustainable. So they might get LEED Silver or LEED Gold. And so we're just trying to make it more flexible so they don't have to use the LEED system, that they can use other, other systems, so.
Mahalo, Chair recognizes Dr. Kilni Dudley.
Yes, sir. Um, you know, in, in all the planning that I've heard out for this area out here, it seems that everybody still agrees that in every house, there will be one person going to work in the city. And if that's true, uh, that's going to make a tremendous problem for traffic. Can you answer that?
So one, one of, actually, uh, we, we were just talking with one of our, one of our board members. And, you know, one of the big advantages of Kalailoa and it should be Kapolei too, is our proximity to the industrial areas, right? The Campbell Industrial. And then there's also a lot of economic potential with the airport and, you know, a lot of the uh developments around, around the area. I think Kapolei was always intended to be like a second, like self-sustaining city, right? And that's why they moved all the, all the uh whatever government offices that they could at the time. That's why that was all out here, right? It was supposed to alleviate the traffic, split the traffic, so that half of it came out here. So I think, you know, as part of, and I think the other thing to note is at least the developers were, were hearing um light industri, there's a big need for light industrial. And so Kalailoa, you know, right now it's one of these areas that would accommodate more jobs. And so I think that's part of the solution is to get a more balanced community.
Okay.
So that's
Um, I just want to say that I, I really think that um we can't afford more development out here until Kapolei City is built. And, you know, if you walk out the front door of this building, uh, there's an awful lot of empty ground out there. I, I think that you guys, I, I like what you're saying, I like everything you're doing, but uh, you know, once you get it all done, put it on the drawer and wait 20 years, you know? And uh, honest to God, we can't afford you guys, we really can't. I want to switch to another question entirely. I, um, you know, I'm really concerned about the raceway and its effect on the people who already live so close, just right across the street. Is there a community association for those people who live on Roosevelt?
Yeah, not, not that I'm aware of. I'm, I, we can look into it and to see what, you know, that said rental, rental housing.
Okay.
Kalailoa Homes, um, but we can talk to them.
But do the people know? Has anybody ever gone door-to-door and said, "Oh, we're gonna have a little racetrack right across the street? It's gonna kill you guys." Yes?
Remember, Dudley, the racetrack you're speaking of is the proposed uh city racetrack in?
The, the one just right across the street that they're uh, the city, city council seems to be supporting it?
Yeah. So I haven't heard any specifics about, you know, the, the racetrack and what they're proposing. I don't know if anybody has gone door-to-door, asked or, you know, seeking input on that. If the, if the city, you know, has an actual proposal for a racetrack on their property, it's likely that, um, you know, it's gonna have to come before the H C D A Board or some kind of review. So I think there'll be an opportunity for the public to read.
Yeah, we're still, uh, we're still setting a meeting, we haven't finalized our meeting with the city yet, but we're, we're look, we're trying to set that up.
Okay, I just want to say that when the city finishes, then they do have to come to the H C D A. And when you people receive that, honest to God, you owe it to the people who live there to have somebody go door-to-door and tell them what's happening so they can protest.
I think, I think if the, if this is the city proposal to have a racetrack uh on that property, the city will probably have to go out and do some community engagement.
You really don't understand, our city council does what they're paid to do. And, and in this case, they are giving in to something that is really, really wrong. So I'm telling you as the H C D A, after the city is done, it comes to you. It's your decision. By that time, you must get to those people and let them know what's going on. It's your duty.
There'll be, when, when it comes before the H C D A Board, public will be noticed of a public hearing and they can provide comments. Thank you, member.
Mahalo, thank you. Any other questions, comments or concerns from fellow board members? Any questions, comments or concerns for the Kalailoa Master Plan Update from Community at Large? Come on down.
Aloha, um, I'm William Albritton and I live in Makakilo, but I used to live in the villages of Kapolei. Um, we still get the newsletter. Maybe six months ago, a year ago, there's an article in the newsletter about the native plants and trees in Kapolei and the fact that there are almost none. Uh, way back in the day when Kapolei was first built, I don't know how folks decided on what trees to plant. But this person was saying in the newsletter, "Gosh, it, gosh, it would be really great if they had planted a bunch of willy-willy trees, for example. They would be these big trees by now. Instead, we have, I don't know what kind of trees we have now in Kapolei, around the villages of Kapolei, but um, I don't think they're from Hawaii." And so uh, my question is, it, it, are native plants in the plan? Is that part of the city um plan or standard? And if it's not in the standard, why not? We're the extinction capital of the world. We're, we're the endangered species capital of the world. That seems like a big issue that we should address with any kind of development. Thank you.
Okay, to save H C D A, um, that update is in the section 1521544, which actually shares a preference for native plants. So our board, previous iterations and the community have been sharing this and they shared it to the Kalailoa Committee that was reviewing it and they put it in. So it is there, it is preferred. Uh, and was, and what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, is that H C D has a plant list of native Hawaiian plant species that are local to the area that they can consider using, so. So in my case.
I would say I think we may have modified that to kind of defer to the city and the cities.
Or you guys changed that list. Okay, good, correct me.
But, but we, you know, I think we can, we can look at it again.
Sounds good. And they're deferring to the city. And as a city advisory committee, we have a list of native plants in our resolution that from the area that are both threatened, endangered, and otherwise naturally occurring in the area for people to consider. First vice chair.
Just really quick, though, there are certain native species that are only found in Kalailoa and nowhere else. And one of those is the Kalailoa nyo, which you might be talking about. But the Kalailoa nyo is found in Kalailoa and nowhere else.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Come on down, community member Patrick Watson.
And mahalo Chair, mahalo Ryan and Craig. Thank you for your presentation, always real informative. So one of the things that came to mind as I was listening to your presentation is the fact that there's, there's been some controversial things happening in this area, Makakilo, Kapalei. The two biggies are the Ho'opili development, where the community was promised underground utilities. And then subsequently, that just kind of evaporated, went away. And, you know, whatever loophole, whatever happened, they were able to sidestep that promise that they made to the community. So undergrounding utilities is a big one. The second one is Makakilo Drive, same kind of thing. The, the community was promised, oh, the extension would go from where it currently ends to Koalatay Parkway and H1. And all of a sudden, you know, all this money that was, you know, put for development, all this stuff disappeared. So I would, I'd like to speak on behalf of the community that maybe that you could safeguard against those kinds of issues reoccurring in our community. Now, I don't know exactly what kind of leverage or whatever, you know, because like Dr. Dudley mentioned, the city has to develop these plans, and they come to you as like a final stamp of approval, if that's how I interpret it. But I just wanted to, if you are not aware of it, make you aware of these really serious issues that the community is facing. And we saw examples of that with the tsunami, people trying to go at Makakilo. I was sitting in the backyard in our place in Kapalei Noles, just watching the cars just stuck on Koalatay Parkway, you know, just people just panicking like, I want to get to my kids. I want to get to safety. And nobody could go anywhere, you know? So these are the kinds of issues that I think really need to be addressed. Long-term management of community features. If you take a drive from Walmart Kapalei on Kialan Nani Street and head Makai, there's all these walls, all these pretty sound walls and things that were developed early on that now are in like estates of disrepairing. Like who fixes that? The tops of the, the stuff are falling off, all the rebar is exposed. So maybe taking a look at that element as well, long-term management. And then you mentioned 15-minute cities, which kind of is a controversial subject too. So, you know, it came up during the Lahaina wildfires, like, oh, they did that so they can wipe everybody out and start over. You know, all the developers can come in, buy all the land cheap and build these things. So to some people, 15-minute, 20-minute cities is kind of a swear word. So I'd like, maybe if you could comment on the effectiveness in 15-minute cities to kind of appease and, you know, assuage our fears about the, the the success of a 15-minute city. Because I saw your slides and, you know, you clearly marked all those things out, like 15-minute walking and driving and regional bike riding. But like I said, there's a lot of people that don't like 15-minute city concept. So maybe you folks can develop that, you know, that information a little bit further. Mahalo.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Patrick. Um, I guess to that, the 15 to 20, 20-minute city, that, the controversy to that, I wasn't too familiar about. But I will say, you know, I live in Kakaako, and I'm fortunate enough to be able to walk to work. You know, it's a five-minute, five. Um, and so, and to be able to walk, you know, walk home, you know, walk to get dinner, walk to get groceries, you know, that type of community, it's a lot healthier, there are a lot of health benefits to it, more sustainable. So that, I think that's the idea. That's what we're trying to infuse into Kalailoa. So, and, and, you know, I think Kapalei, as it's developed, you know, I think it was intended to be more of a urban center, right? But it's, it's more suburban as it's kind of evolved. And so, you know, as the climate, as the world continues to change, right? We need to be able to have more sustainable communities that use.
Final comment, if you don't know this guy, he's super smart. He's got a pedigree, a Ma'aua, and I totally trust him. I think he's wonderful. He used to be a chair for the Kakak, well, I want a neighborhood board too. So he has this experience as well. And I really appreciate you, and I really trust what you're saying, so mahalo.
Right on. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Good. Uncle Frank, go right ahead. Online.
Yes, Mr. Tam, has HCD briefed the mayor and the city council on its preference for the rail LPA to be on Roosevelt rather than Saratoga?
No, but we did submit it as part of the Oahu Regional Transportation Plan 2050 update. So it did, it did go in our, in our testimony. And I, and I think they're, they're looking at, they're, they're aware. This idea is not a new one. I think HCD had previously brought it up to heart in the late, I don't know, 2018, 2019 timeframe. So it's, it's, it's been around for a while. I think we do, are looking, you know, we will need to coordinate closely with HDOT and, yeah, Oahu MPO. We, we actually may have talked to them about it, I think about it. And certainly the city, as they do their studies on extensions, I think they, this already is one thing that they're, they're looking at. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Okay, Chair recognizes board member Dan Hare.
Thank you, Chair. I see we still have a large number of legislators and representatives still on our agenda. I'm wondering if, if it's appropriate for me to ask about maybe moving board business up in the agenda since we skipped it last month?
Okay, yes, our procedural question, yep, we can vote on that. But, and we'll come back to that. So any other final questions for HCD? Good hearing, none? Thank you for the presentation. And we'll now move to public input. The request from fellow board member here was to move up board business because we postponed all of board business last, last time. So what I will do, unless there's an objection, is that we allow for community members that are not elected officials or agency representatives that didn't give me prior notice, seven days to put it on the agenda. So community members, if you have concerns, questions, or comments that you want to bring before the board, I think we can entertain that before we go to board business. Is that okay, board members?
Yes.
Seeing, okay, awesome. So the agenda's been called, so public input. Everybody from the community can come up and talk story. Come on down. Yeah, yeah, come, come, come. You have up to three minutes. You don't need to use it.
Okay, okay, copy that. Okay, so again, aloha, I'm William Allbritton, and I live in Makakilo. And I just want to give an update and a summary of our neighborhood meeting to the board and, and to the community. So we had about 40 people meet on August 4th with Roy. So kind of recap it last time, Roy Erey. So he works with the Hawaii Engineering Group. And him and Craig Cook gave a presentation last time about a proposal for a development that called Makakila Bluffs, excuse me, which would extend Kulihi Street. Anyway, so we met and then, so, let me get, okay, I see time's ticking down already. So 40 people attended, 39 were opposed to this proposal. We asked many questions. The main concerns were traffic, noise, dirt, drainage, grading, excavation, construction. And then even after the construction ongoing, sorry, understanding they want to sell the lots to these 14.99 acres. And there might also be livestock equipment and farming in the 70 or so acres of farmland. So they're saying that they'll build 37 more homes, 10 large patches of ag land. And then there's only one roadway in and out of, of Kulihi. So we think that's a fire hazard. It's, it's going to cause a lot of congestion. And then they did say, instead of 54 homes, they would just build 37. But the neighborhood as a whole, it's my understanding that, you know, 39 or 40, 40 people have a lot of concerns and are opposed to it. You know, even 37 homes, that's like saying, you know, hey, neighbor, can you trim the trees so I can see the ocean? And they are, you know, cut down your tree or trim your tree to see the ocean. And then your neighbor says, well, based on your feedback, I'll just cut a few branches, and you still can't see the ocean. It's just not making things better. So just in conclusion, I'd just like to say, this is my neighborhood. This is our neighborhood. And most people in our neighborhood are opposed to the Makakila Bluffs, the extension of Kulihi Street. And, you know, this would only benefit a few people that aren't even from our neighborhood. And so I don't think it's right. I don't think it's fair, and I don't think it's being nice to your neighbors. So that's kind of all I have to say about it. So thanks for the opportunity to speak.
First mahalo. Thank you. And offline, can you send me the notes or the petition that outlines the members in the community that are in opposition? Thanks. Okay, awesome. Any other community members wanting to speak? Okay, seeing none, let's get to board business. Okay, come on down. Oh, Uncle just made me remind. So we double-checked on the parcel across from Walmart. And Uncle is correct, it is actually owned by HHFDC. And they are currently in lease negotiations with Michael's Development and potentially will be bringing in Boca once they figure out the unit situation. But whether or not they're actually legally, legally connected to the property right now for whatever HPD needs is unclear. So they got to go talk to HHFDC first.
Okay, my name is Steve Lauren. I live in the villages of Kapalei, and I have two things. I moved in Kumwiki in September of 1990. And regarding infrastructure, we waited three years for a grocery store. We waited three years for a drugstore. Dr. Dudley knows, and maybe some other folks know, that we waited four or five years for a library. Then the library came, and there was no money for books or librarians. So when they plan these new communities, they have got to do the schools, libraries, and that kind of stuff. That has to be in the plan, and it has to be started, construction, before these homes are built. Otherwise, you'll end up with the same thing. Second issue, I wanted to ask, the 900 homes at the northwest corner, which is, like you said, in negotiations with HHFDC, is all the construct, the, the big machinery I see on Fort Barrett Road, does anybody know, is that? What is that doing? Is that part of that? Like, do they have permits to do that? Or does anybody know?
Board member Sheila Maderas?
It, it's not part of the, that development. It's, I think it's just the widening of Fort Barrett Road. It's a different development, but it's not that development in particular.
Okay, okay, that's, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you for reminding us. We got brief from DTS and DOT that that's part of the widening that they owed us. Okay, any other community members? Seeing none, let's get to board business. No, we did, I asked for an objection. Oh, okay, never mind, we object, so we got to keep going for public input. You made an objection, so we go in order. So now we, going forward, from the mayor's office, from council member Andrew Tupole's office. Come on down.
Good evening, Chair and Board. Council member was online, but unfortunately not. So the only thing I'm here to report is what we had submitted to you on the working of our office for the resolutions of 2510, I'm sorry, 25109, 25222, Bill 5, Bill 62. So these are the things that we're still implementing and working on, seeing if we can be able to get it situated for our office to push through. And we did submit that to you by email. We did have a successful border water supply, watershed management just, yesterday. That was on virtual. Another thing to report is that we, we do have an R3 program for store revival reconnect that's occurring here in Kapalei. This helps for the homeless situation, so we can see how we can go about to assist those who are in need for anything from documentation and any services for shelter, anything in that factor. So we try to see how we can assist, and that's currently located at the Dream House in Kapalei High School. And that's going to occur all the way up until November 6. And we do show that we submitted documentation in reference to the project of the Kalailoa racetrack. So our office does not have any standing as of yet in favor or against, but we are still going and reviewing. And once we do make that decision, we'll, we'll present it accordingly. Is there any questions or concerns?
Just a clarification on the racetrack review. Is your office reviewing the permanent racetrack proposal or the interim racetrack proposal? Because there's two proposals, actually, there's like 12.
There's a lot of proposals. So it, the one that was submitted and questioning for our office was the interim proposal.
Got it.
So we're still under reviewing that at this time.
Awesome, thank you so much. Okay, any questions for council member Andrew Tupole's office? Seeing none? Mahalo, and thank you for being with us. Okay, now let's go to the congressional for Ed Case or Joe Tukura. Uncle Nasser, go right ahead.
So Chairman, members of the board, I left in the chat press release from Congressman Ed Case, who released this yesterday. He is seeking applicants, qualified applicants, young people, men and women, who may be interested in a congressional nomination to any of the four service academies. Deadline for applications, and they must be postponed only then October 10. The four service academies, of course, is West Point for the Army, Annapolis for the Navy, Air Force Academy in Colorado, and the March Marine Academy in, in New York. So if we know of anyone, I know, I think we got one applicant from Kapalei High School, if I recall, last year. So anyone who is interested, if you know of anyone who may be interested, please call our office for further details or go to Congressman's website, case.house.gov. Want to mention that, of course, because of the tsunami scare, the event on July 29th, we had to postpone his Teletown Live Talk Story for constituents in his congressional district. We are going to reschedule that opportunity for people to reach out to the congressman and share your issues and concerns with him. This will be on October 2nd, which I believe is a Thursday evening, Thursday at 6 o'clock. And for further details on how to participate in that talk story, virtual talk story, go again to the website, case.house.gov. That's it for now, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, willing to answer any questions you may have.
Mahalo, any questions, comments, or concerns for Congressman Ed Case? Mahalo, any questions, comments, or concerns for Congressman Ed Case's office from the community or the board? Good seeing them, thank you very much, and get your recommendations to the congressional to help uplift our youth. Okay, now let's go to Governor Josh Green's representative. Is Uncle Gordon Pang online? Okay, Uncle Gordon Pang is not online, um, but he did send me a communication clarifying our situation from before about, uh, HHFDC is the landowner of the property involved with the uncle that's littering. And the community member Patrick Watson was the impetus for us getting the information from Uncle Gordon. And he clarified that Michael's Development Group is the one that is currently leasing, and they will post the no trespassing sign and work with HPD in order to try and resolve the situation. So next time you guys see him and you come back over here, we will tell Michaels if they can do something. So mahalo, Uncle Gordon, and mahalo, Uncle Patrick from the community for helping resolve that. Now let's go to Senator Gabbard's office.
Hello, half-board and community members. Um, I'm Melanie, Senator Gabbard's community liaison. Uh, just a few things tonight. Uh, first, Senator's August newsletter. Um, he highlighted Hawaii's Purple Heart Day, that is on August seventh, thanks to resolutions HCR ninety-four and SR ninety-three, uh, recognizing Hawaii as a Purple Heart City. And I'll drop the link to that into the chat. Um, also Senator Gabbard will be hosting his next Listen Story meeting on Saturday, September twenty-seventh, from nine to ten AM at the Villages of Kapole. Um, a Zoom link is also available. You can just shoot us an email to RSVP. Um, and feel free to reach out to our office if you have any questions or concerns. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions anyone has back to the Senator.
Any questions for Senator's office? Chair recognizes Second Vice Chair, Dr. Kyony Dudley.
Yes, um, I missed the Talk Story, um, last Saturday, and somebody was going to talk about the rhinoceros beetle and, uh, that its problems. You know, I've been very concerned about the trees on, um, Makakilo Drive. Uh, so many of them are losing their leaves and some now are just completely barren. Um, and I'm wondering, is this from that beetle? Or does anyone know what actually is killing all of our trees?
I know that there is definitely a big CRB problem on the west side as the Eva Neighborhood Board had requested our office originally to have a CRB expert come and educate the community. Um, but I'll have to double-check with, um, our office manager, Meg, and I can get back to you guys next month on what exactly it is on Makakilo Drive.
Uh, if you could let us know what kind of trees the rhinoceros beetle kills, that would help too. Thank you.
It's the palm trees.
Only?
Um, only to my knowledge, but I can come back with more definitely next month for you guys, a bit more on invasive species for you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, mahalo. Thank you so much. Any other questions for Senator Gabbard's office? Hearing none, let's go now to Senator Decourt's office. Any representative online wishing to speak? Yep, seeing online, thank you very much. Now to Representative Diamond Garcia's office. Kanani Souza. Darius Keela. Okay. Anybody in the, would like to speak at this time on the public input section? Going once, going twice, going three times? Okay, now to board business. Yes, committees and committee assignments, let's organize ourselves. The chair recommends that we establish the transportation, environmental justice, parks and recreation, education, holiday, beautification, and community outreach committees. Transportation Chair Mick Ferrera, environmental justice, Dr. Kyony Dudley, Parks and Recreation, Miguel La Linstone, Holiday, Carol England. I'm sorry, not Holiday, um, beautification, Carol England, Holiday, Sheila, no, community outreach, Sheila Maderas. Those are the committee chair positions that I've, that I have liked to put down right now. And I'm looking for a chair for education, and I'm looking for a chair for, for holiday. Any of the board members online would like to take up? Or in person would like to do education or holiday?
Chairman?
Go right ahead. Yep, so, yep, we're just looking for volunteers, like, for the chair position. And afterwards, I'll ask who wants to sit on them.
I'll do the chair for the holiday.
Okay, Carol England for holiday and Sheila Maderas for education. Perfect, okay. Now, the community members for transportation is going to be Uncle Frank Granadio. The community members for holiday is going to be Dr. Amy Bosler. Community members for beautification is member that's Greg. Are there any other board members wishing to serve on any other committee? Okay, environmental justice is the one that, that handles all of the issues in our community in which we get dumped on, all of the raw end of the deal. Power lines, dumps, like hurricanes, like natural disaster stuff that we don't have preparation. All of the things that get problems in the community, that's, that's, that's that community. The committee, environmental justice is the one that handles all of our infrastructure problems, all of our social problems and security, emergency preparedness, Sheila Maderas. And community outreach, um, the purview of community outreach is empowering and educating our community about what's going on, including neighborhood board business. Okay, Mun Kahale?
I want to be on that committee too, to help Sheila and.
Thank Carol England, okay. Any other board members wishing to serve on any committee?
Chair, it's Dan.
Okay.
You can put me where it's most needed. I don't have a particular, uh, um, interest in one only. So if there's one spot that needs an extra body or voice, I can, I can do that.
Okay, you will float, um, so education?
I'll take him.
You've been requested from education and from environmental justice, so you can be on both or you can choose one.
Sounds good, stick me on both.
He says he'll, he'll serve on both. Dan on both, okay, great. And just FYI, because of my office, I sit on all of them, so, so you don't have to put me on any of them. Okay, anybody else? Okay, and Sheila will go on transportation. Got it, perfect. Okay, going once, going twice, sold, okay. We have our chairs and we have our members in the community members. So for community members at large that are not sitting on the board, you can serve on the committees. And if you wish to serve on a committee, just reach out to me and we'll get you on officially. But you can, as a voting member, otherwise you can always show up to the meetings or just call the chairs directly and let them know what's going on. We've, are there any objections to the slate as proposed? Hearing no objections, Chair calls it unanimous. Moving forward, Uncle Frank wants to continue to be our liaison to Ampo. Any objections? Chair recommends we adopt, no objections. Anyone wishing to testify? Hearing no testimony on either? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Okay, I already called for objections. Uncle Frank, congratulations, you stuck with us. Okay, now let's move to the fun one. Mahalo. Position on the Halau Va'a Commons Project of the Episcopal Church in Hawaii. Um, we have the information presented to us last month and updates circulated to board members in the interim. The chair's recommendation is that we support the Halau Va'a Commons Project. Is there a motion to support? It's been moved by Miguel La Linstone, second by Dr. Kyony Dudley. Anybody from the community wishing to testify and support against or any manao? We heard a lot of stuff from last time, um, and all positive, so come on down.
I am, uh, Kahu Mark Ki Kaila O'Leary Hayworth, and I just appreciate all the support that we've been getting. And, um, especially after last month, uh, it's just kind of been rolling, rolling on down the hill. So, um, really appreciate, uh, anything we can do. And after this is done, I'll be looking forward to figuring out more ways to help us move even quicker towards our, towards our end goal of creating increased community support and that infrastructure that we're all looking for.
Awesome, thank you so much, Kahu, for being here with us. Any others wishing to testify on the Halau Va'a Commons Project of the Episcopal Church in Hawaii in Lot nine-one-one-one-two-two, Kama'ha Lu Kapole Oahu. That's the one across from the park and the Boca offices, right next to the elementary school. Okay, seeing no testimonies, all those in favor from the board to support, say aye. Any opposed, say aole. Any abstentions, say kanalua. Chair calls it unanimous, congratulations, continue hulomua. Now, we go on to the position for the Hawaii Keke Cable Landing Expansion Project. The chair is inquiring because the board members had asked to participate and with site visits. Are we ready to now, after having site visits, are we ready to take a position? Okay, so can someone make a motion to support or otherwise? It, it's, okay, the, the recommendation is to support. Uh, it's been moved by Miguel La Linstone, second by Carol England. Is there any testimony on the Hawaii Keke Cable Landing Expansion Project? Position to support. Okay, does want to go in once, going twice, going three times? We've talked about this a lot and we've resolved lots of the issues and concerns. So we're moving forward. Any further discussion from board members? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of supporting, say aye. Any opposed, say aole. Any abstentions, say kanalua. Okay, hearing none, Chair calls it unanimous. Hawaii Keke Cable Landing Expansion Project Team, thank you for engaging with the community and providing awesome feedback and being able to get on property and onsite with you all. It made much difference for us to recognize what's going on with the project. Now let's move forward with, um, business E, resolution establishing a permitted interaction group to support the development of community resiliency hubs in the Eva region. Chair's recommendation is to support, um, we are re-establishing the resiliency hub and permitted interaction group. Our final report from their first version from twenty-twenty-four said we still have work to do and we'd like to continue to work between our board and Eva. Um, so we are empowering them to continue good work. Um, is there anyone wishing to, uh, testify on this matter? Okay, well, we now discuss testimony first. Anybody testifying from the public? Hearing none, chair's recommendation is to support, is there a motion before we start discussion to support? Dr. Dudley, was that a motion?
No.
Okay, what, there's not a motion, what are you, what are you requesting then?
Um, I, I, I really think that we need to have something more than just, um, the, um, development of resiliency hubs. You know, uh, I, I, I think we ought to be talking about, um, variety of hurricane preparations and, uh, tsunami preparations, wildfire preparations. I, I think this group can do an awful lot more than just resiliency hubs and that's it, period. So I'd, I'd like to see it expanded a little bit more.
Okay, so hearing the, the request from the Chair of the Environmental Justice Committee in order to broaden the scope of this permitted interaction group to talk story beyond just community resiliency hubs, uh, the Chair would recommend that we refer this matter to environmental justice so they can expand it appropriately and recommend back to us, um, how big they want to go.
Very good, thank you.
Is there any objections to referring the matter to the Environmental Justice Committee? For them, they like do the work, can we give it to them? Okay, seeing everybody say you can have it, congratulations. It's been referred to your committee. Now, next, um, is the resolution supporting the development of additional postal services in Kapole. Um, this resolution is drafted in light of the conversations that we have with the, the problems of infrastructure we have because we're building homes prior to the infrastructure necessary. So we are already at capacity with our regional postal services and we're, we already know that there's thousands of more homes coming and there is no plan to expand services, so we should take the position now to expand, um, existing services and a new full-service postal, post office, given they're planning ten to thirty more thousand units in our area. And roughly, yes, so, so the chair's recommendation is that we support the resolution for additional postal services in Kapole. Um, is there a motion?
No move.
It's been moved and seconded from Dr. Dudley, Mun Kahale. Anyone wishing to testify? Yeah, we can ask question afterwards. Going once, going twice, going three times? Okay, for discussion, Chair recognizes Member Miguel La Linstone.
Chair, I only have a question on the current population, twenty-four thousand five hundred eighty. That seems really low for our population. It's my understanding that twenty thousand people live in Makakilo alone. I'm just curious if that's the correct population number.
Um, we can, we can, no, it's a lot more. Well, there must be a typo in that. Okay, so Chair recognizes that we have some data problems with that that we will have to check. So let's defer this till next month, this problem's not going to go away, and let's go and double-check, uh, the data facts. Okay, is there any objection to deferring this to the next agenda so we can straighten out our numbers? Because we know we get more than twenty-four thousand people over here. Okay, okay, seeing no objections to deferring that resolution, moving forward. Resolution, before supporting sponsorship of local artists to create public murals across the district on public facilities and utility boxes, I think. Okay, is there a motion, the chair's recommendation is that we support? It's been moved by Member Miguel La Linstone, second by Member Carol England. Anyone wishing to testify? This is the fact that we have all of these boxes that are getting vandalized with graffiti and otherwise that we can now use as public space for art. Um, that's what we're recommending. Okay, anyone wishing to testify, going once, twice, three times? Chair does recognize that I got, uh, a few testimonies and support from people, um, online that said this was a good idea. Uh, and now to discussion, Chair recognizes Dr. Kyony Dudley.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I strongly object to this. I, uh, I really think it's asking for it. You know, if you drive down, what is it, Cook Street, uh, in Kakaako, uh, the, the, there are buildings there that are black with ghosts on them and just all kinds of, of what I would call crap, you know? Um, I, I really think that if we're talking about public buildings, um, we, we, we need something really strong. We need a group that is going to approve that. We, 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 we need to make sure that what we get is nice. You know, we used to have what they called the, um, uh, golly, I can't, can't remember right now, out, um, um, I don't know. At any rate, it was a, a committee, a, a, a group of people. This is way back in the, the fifties, sixties, seventies. Uh, and, and they were very strong. The reason we don't have, uh, the big billboards, uh, on the highways here is because that committee, uh, was so strong. And they just, uh, they forced the city to keep us from cluttering the place. And I think that, I think that anytime that we just kind of open up to the fact that, yeah, you can do a public building and just anybody can, uh, do it, we don't need more ugly stuff around here. What we need is nature, you know? And, and the more ugly paintings we have, the more beautiful paintings we have, you know? It's just not nature, it's not Hawaii. And, uh, I, I And I, I really, I strongly stand opposed to it. I, I think that instead we ought to be making strong efforts to get rid of all the, the paintings that are around. Okay, thank you very much.
Mahalo. So the chair wants to offer two mana'o. The first is that there is already an established process within the city, County of Honolulu for art on public buildings. Like, so that is already a bureaucratic process that exists that has to go through multiple approvals. And second, I, I would definitely recommend that we add a resolve clause that we charge our community, our committee on beautification to review any art projects proposed in our district. As we just recently established it. So the, the thinking of the chair is that our committee on beautification would be the one that champions this work on the areas with other community groups and partners and whoever else. Because we are more closely engaged with the governmental intersects. So with all of the bureaucrats and all of the, all of the contact numbers that we have, we can help our neighbors and civil society figure out how to put up appropriate works of art that can be showcased here at our board before they go through and finalize. So that's the two mana'o. So if it would please the board, I would add the resolve clause that the board number thirty-four charged the committee on beautification to review art projects proposed in our district. Carol England makes the second. Okay, so very good. So it's removed and seconded to, for, to be added. Anybody opposed to the amendment of that resolve clause before we go back?
I'd like to add to it.
Okay, go right ahead. What do you want to add?
Well, I just, you know, I, I think that we could add, and we encourage the, the natural beauty appreciation and we discourage things which are not natural.
Okay, so with that mana'o, what I would suggest is that we refer that to the committee on beautification to come up with any type of mana'o criteria that they would like to recommend to our community members that are thinking about doing murals, right? Because every community has their own ethics and ethos. And they would have to also check into the already master plans and guidelines for the area that already exist. What we can put up and the color codes, codes and schemes and so forth. So they'll have a heavy lift. So my recommendation is that we refer to the committee on beautification to take your mana'o and figure out our internal criteria for what we would support as a board. Is that okay? Okay, okay, great.
Can I, can I make?
Yes, go right ahead. Member.
I, I totally agree with you, Dr. Dudley, of what we put up. And what my vision was when I approached chair was it was definitely going to have a feel for Kapole, and I kind of wanted to talk to me, um, board member Mikiella. I was thinking that we have so many of these light utility boxes. They have light boxes at every light. And those are the ones we're going to start out with. That we build a story about Kapole. Each box is a little bit of a story. So by the time we get down to the end of Barrington Highway, you know, going to town, that we would have a story about who Kapole, you know, is and what we're about. So it's definitely going to be connecting to the Ina. And I, I want to read a statement because this is a statement that I wrote to the chair when I said I wanted to be part of this beautification. My goal is to help lead projects and enhance the look and feel of our community. Murals, neighborhood cleanups, et cetera. But also build pride and connection within the community. So that's my goal as chair.
Awesome. Okay, super helpful. So now beautification now has kuli'ana. You guys have work to do. And is there any objections to the resolve clause that the board number thirty-four charged the committee on beautification to review art projects proposed for our district? Seeing no objections, that resolve is now incorporated. Now we're at the whole resolution. Is there any further discussion? Chair goes to board member Sheila Maderas.
I just wanted to add, we had a discussion with the vice principal of Kapole High School about beautification projects. And she said there's an art, they have an exceptional art class, just students that can design what we want. And she's super excited that we were even thinking that to, to create the story of Kapole, because they have, they have the, the talent within the school to do it. And, and can you imagine the kids who are chosen to do that? The pride that they would have. So, anyway.
Awesome. So great work for you to do in the beautification committee to figure out and make a recommendation back to the board. Any other discussion? Dr. Kiony Dudley, go right ahead.
Uh, if we're talking about the small boxes, I, I, I don't mind that. What I do mind is paintings on buildings, okay? And I really, really think we ought to stay away from that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing no other discussion. All those in favor of supporting sponsorship of local artists to create public murals across the district on public facilities and utility boxes as amended? Say aye. Any opposed, say aole.
We're going to refer this back to a committee and they're going to rewrite it.
Oh, we're voting. So, okay, sorry. We'll, 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 we'll scratch the vote currently so that we can come back. There's a procedural question. So the chair's mana'o is to refer the issue of beautification standards, criteria, who we engage, how we engage to the committee as they go figure that out. But the resolution is still recommended to go forward because all this is doing is saying that we support just doing this work, which then gives the beautification committee the charge to go do it. We still don't have the process of whether or not we're going to approve murals on buildings or not. But we, because that's not our kuli'ana. Our kuli'ana, we can make a recommendation and support that. But we still need to go through the process with the different state agencies and the city and County of Honolulu for art on buildings. But with utility companies, we can move forward without the city or the state. We can move forward with the utility companies. Right.
But could we just defer this until they rewrite it?
Oh, okay. So the recommendation is to defer to you rewrite the whole thing, including the standards? You okay with that? Okay, no objection to that? Okay. So we're referring that, the rewrite to the committee on beautification and they will take that up as well. Okay. Awesome. So we no need to vote on that. And now with our two minutes, we get to have this robust, this conversation about the order of business for neighborhood board number thirty-four. So the request was consideration for reordering the order of business to put public input higher, or at least the elected officials higher. So let me clarify the chair's thoughts, given the advice that we've been given from the neighborhood board commission and the Office of Information Practice. Right now, our elected officials can show up during the public input section and share anything they want without notice, and the board can ask any questions they want without the notice, but we just can't vote. If the elected officials wish to speak on the topic that they want us to take a position on, we need to agendize that seven days prior. So, and then we'll put it on specifically for that item that they're asking us to take a position on. So that's the only requirement that we have for the elected officials. They are welcome to speak to us during the public input section that we can talk story. Otherwise, if they need us to, to take a position, they just got to tell us in advance. Like all of the things that council member Tupola's office sent to us now, that we want to take a position on, we can put on next agenda. So, and we can ask her to speak to them if we want. So having said that, is there a desire still to move up the public input section? Yep.
Just clarification. So they can just do their updates during the third, three minutes. Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There, there was a, a man here tonight who did speak during the public time, okay? And he's the one I think that really asked the board to move it up higher. And I don't know exactly what his reasoning was, but I think one meeting we weren't able to get around to public comment.
Right.
And so, you know, there, there would be value in putting that up higher, I think.
So, so the, the chair's thought on this is that the reason why we've missed a couple of times where we've had public input during my tenure at all, and the reasons why is because our board has been requested to have more presentations and because of all of the development that's happening than almost any other board at this time. So we, we get requests from three to like eight presentations a month. And the chair has to decide who can come to us or not. Otherwise, we have to have special meetings, which we already do. We already have special meetings because we are inundated. The largest concern the chair has is that our neighbors don't get to speak. That's my largest concern. Like, not, not, not everybody else they want to do something here and become our neighbor, but our actual neighbors. That's, that's my largest concern. So unless there's a strong push, the recommendation is hold it as is. And we will try to continue to make sure that our neighbors get to speak. Recognizing elected officials can always let us know to put them on the agenda specifically. Seeing no objection to the recommendation, that stands, and we are at time. So the chair is going to make our final announcement, deferring everything else. The next regular Makakilo Kapole Honakai Hala neighborhood board number thirty-four meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seven PM at Kapole Hale conference rooms A and B and online via WebEx. And with that, everyone, we are now adjourned. Mahalo and have a wonderful night. Thank you for staying.